Welcome, everybody, to our Committee of the Whole for July 8, 2025. I am Councillor Lauren Greenlaw, Acting Mayor for the month of July, who will be chairing this meeting. Welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. And just to start us off in a good way, I would like to start by giving thanks to the earth that supports us, that composts and renews, the air that fills our lungs and brings winds of change, the fires that renew our forest and that we were safe from in this past event, and also the water that fills our sound and flows in our rivers. So yeah, just wanted to give some acknowledgement and thanks for the land that we are currently residing on. I'd like to have, just to be, please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available for the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have any concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting, which is Sarah Morris. I'd like to point out that Councillor Stoner is attending remotely today. And with that, I'd like to have a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Moved by Councillor French, seconded by everyone, let's say, Councillor Hamilton. And right now, we're going to start off with our, this is, what's that? Oh, yeah, all in favor. I always forget the voting. Okay, we're going to start off with a super fun topic, talking about Squamish's Front Country Trail Inventory. Here to present to us, well, I thought Ms. Church, I think, is attending virtually. And yeah, Ms. McJanet and Ms. Philip are here to present to us. So take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Committee members. My name's Asia Philp, Planner with the District. I'm the staff liaison on this Squamish Front Country Trail Inventory project, which was a multi-stakeholder endeavor that has taken place over a few years here. So we're bringing this for council and committees information. I'll go through just a quick intro, and then I will pass it along to Nicola from Cascade Environmental. Also joining us is Uzi representing Sorka, and we have some other advisory committee members joining us as well. All right. So this project is a, basically, it's a comprehensive inventory that is meant to evaluate and document our trail network. We want to use this as a resource to inform planning and policy projects, as well as processing of development applications. And this also checks the box for fulfilling one of our OCP policies related to the policy precursors around growth management and reviewing development applications that are outside of our growth management boundary. So that's coming from the 2017 OCP policy. So the goal is to develop a detailed understanding of our trail infrastructure and our various networks. So Sorka and Cascade and all the other partners have developed this summary document. It tells us what trails exist, what are the main values of each of the various network areas, and what should be prioritized as Squamish grows and develops. So that was my quick intro. I'm going to pass it along to Nicola, and Nicola is joining us remotely. Let me know when you want me to forward this, each slide, Nicola, and I'll drive for you.
Great, thank you. Um, good, sorry, I just heard myself and it made me pause a moment. Sorry, my name is Nicola Chet. I'm the GS Manager at Cascade Environmental. And we were basically hired to facilitate an identification of the user's opinion on the Squamish Trail-based recreational network. A steering committee and advisory group were formed. So the steering committee consisted of the Squamish Lulua Regional District, the District of Squamish, Recsides and Trails BC, and Sorka. And then an advisory committee was also created. And the advisory committee was a group of users. So that's Sorka, the Squamish Trail Society, the Squamish Dirt Bike Association, 99 Trials, Squamish Off-Road Cycling Association, Squamish Access Society, the Squamish National Trail Users, and some community-led members just representing like overall users. And the advisory committee were able to help engage us on, on what the community around them thought. So after the formation of the steering committee, we developed a three-phase methodology to build on expert data, local knowledge, and community input. Phase one was a pure kind of spatial analysis. We created the management units that you can see there so that we could provide feedback on different areas of Squamish that had the same user types that were like all designed to get that. And we worked with the advisory group and the steering committee on defining those. We then overlaid that with lots of spatial data to give us some statistics on the 545 kilometers of trail then, at the time of the analysis. And we were able to look at neighborhoods they were with, overlaps with existing tenure, sensitive areas. Phase two involved engagement of the advisory group. So each group was given a standardized form to describe the values, experiences, and concerns they had for each trail network area. We also, based on previous experience, found that one-to-one engagement worked best. So we provided the survey, but also then met with each group's representative to check they felt like they were heard. And then phase three was the public survey. So that was where the public was able to rate the importance of the values as identified by the advisory group, helping to ensure that our assessment reflected the broader community perspectives. They also had an opportunity to describe and highlight any specific trails or any other specific things that they were concerned about. Well, the three-phase approach allowed us to combine spatial data, use experts, and community opinion to generate an understanding of each area. We do the next slide, please. So who we heard from? The advisory committee, it's included the representatives we just talked about. The public survey that had 462 responses, 70% of which were local residents. Of the public that responded, 55% of them said they were a member of Sorka. And then you can see 23% were the Squamish Access Society. And of course, these could overlap because they could be both. Could not just one or the other. You were able to say which ones you were part of. Can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So initially, we had the idea to explore a ranking of individual trails. This was to, you know, say which was better than the other. But it became clear very early on from the feedback from the advisory committee that like all trails were all important to everybody for different reasons. And this approach wouldn't necessarily be optimal. So one being that trails don't really exist in isolation. Value comes from being part of a larger network or experience. Two, that the people using it offer diff from what their value is. Dog walkers and families, climbers, beginner mountain bikers, adaptive users. And of course, what's trendy and fashionable. New trendy bike trails are obviously much more fashionable than older ones. We only have to look at things like back in the day when Comfortably Numb was the worldwide Whistler Trail that everyone went to. And now it's definitely not on the list of many people's things. So the also differences were things that people really liked about those trails might also be impacted by rerouting, closing, and rebuilding every time. So what we did discover is that many users valued experience and characteristics of whole areas above single trails. So these attributes like access to home, connectivity, opportunities for certain scenic views. And this allowed us to focus the assessment on a value-based assessment. This allowed more flexibility, and it hopes to help guide that. Alice Lake, for example, is not just half Nelson. It is a certain set of values, and it's those values that are more important to maintain than a specific part of a specific trail. So the next slide, please. So what we learned. So across all the areas, several consistent values emerged. And these were things like connectivity and loop potential, trail diversity for skills progressions, especially for mountain biking, specific natural features. So an area that had maybe five or six trails where there's slabs and specific views. Each individual trail may be valued for different reasons, but the overall reason that people go to that area is for slabs in general. So that would be the thing in which we were suggesting is the important bit to maintain. The next slide, oh, no, sorry, that's gone wrong. The trails were used all year round, and peak usage is obviously in the summer and the shoulder season, with many trails doubling for commuter routes and local walking paths. There was some concern of staging areas being over capacity, particularly in Baldy Highlands and Alice Lake. We also saw identification of several common challenges, such as conflicts between motorized and non-motorized use in shared spaces, development pressures reducing access or fragmentating networks, capacity concerns, and seasonal wear and erosion from high-volume use, especially in the summer nowadays. And next slide, please. And just to review some of the stats that we got from the beginning, where that's from the data, 42% of trails are bike primary. So I know that we all talk about trails being multi-use, but obviously there's definitely a direction that they are, tend to be more used. So we have 40% of trails that were bike primary, and 29% were for multi-use, and 18 were for dirt bikes. The remainder supporting hiking and adaptive uses. The trail network spans across Crown, private, and Squamish Nation lands, with many high-use trails overlapping with areas designated for future residential development or have environmental sensitivities. And we hope that this can kind of help direct the future growth and being incorporated into the needs and values of the trails and the use constraints. Thank you.
It's Uzi Valiente. I'm Director of Advocacy for Squamish Off-Road Cycling Association. I'm joined by one of my colleagues, Matt Parker, from Squamish Trail Society, and Spencer Fishin from Trails 99. And I'm talking today on behalf of all trail users, so it's just not a mountain bike-centric view that I'm bringing. A bit of what I want to talk about is a little bit about what the inventory actually means and what we found. You heard about a sort of change of approach and valuation, where we went from some numeric ranking to understanding that the sum is greater than the, than the parts that comprise it. So trying to catalog or, or list trails and put a value on them is a difficult exercise. It's the interconnectivity of the trails, the relationship of various trails to each other, and what they mean to a specific zone in Squamish is really important to understand when you're going forward to make planning or rezoning or infrastructure decisions. You know, historically, and I've had the benefit of hearing Councillor Anderson talk and talking to the mayor and folks that have been around here a lot longer than I have. I've only been here 13 years. You know, what was a resource-based community where people worked and then built recreational amenities around them so that they could enjoy their living here has shifted over time, where, you know, this community now, people basically work here. They may work elsewhere, but the value of living here are the recreational and environmental amenities that they get. And certainly, when you talk to developers, and I have the opportunity to talk to lots of them, they recognize that some of the intrinsic value in the developments that they're proposing are the fact that they're in Squamish and these amenities exist. And so the tension that we're constantly trying to resolve is one where people want to move here because it's an amazing place. They have tons of opportunities to recreate, whether they're dirt bikers, trails riders, mountain bikers, or runners, or climbers. It's all here, or they're out on the ocean for that, that, that matter, and have access to the ocean from a number of spots. And, and the pressure to move here and then to build the infrastructure, which actually then potentially threatens the very reason that they moved here. And so this is a, you know, this is, this is why you guys get paid the big bucks is to kind of work through these things. But, but this provides, in our opinion, a very good basis for understanding the fundamental value and using it as a context to make the decisions on individual development proposals that are brought before council, but also to sort of project forward and say, how do we carry these values going forward into the future? So probably go to the next slide. I've sort of paraphrased that slide. I'm not going to read bullets. And so, so, you know, there's, there's three things that come out of this, I think. One is it provides some certainty on what's on the ground today. I think, I think we've managed with all the user input, with Cascad sort of navigating the compilation of all the evidence and information, both electronically and through input from, from the various groups. You've now got a certain, some certainty on what's out there and what the value is and how the community and the users at large view it. Again, it's a context for planning. You now have, where do you want to go from here? As you have all of the constraints that are being created through pressure for development. And so what's the vision that we're moving towards? How do we retain some of the values that exist today and potentially project those forward into the future? As the community grows, you know, there's constant trail building going on. That's another source of, of activity and pressure that all of the groups sort of monitor. How does that unfold? And how does the community grow and the amenities, amenity values preserved? And, and then again, you know, finally, not to beat a dead horse, really, this is about values. This is about community values. What do we value living here? And how do we project those values forward? And I think, you know, the trail network as a whole is, is, I can rhyme off a bunch of statistics about induced economic activity and all of those things that we benefit from. But it's really the value of this, of this jewel that we have that, that we need to think about, how do we project that forward and preserve that? And even enhance it as we also accommodate more people moving into town. So I think that's the meaning of it. And I'm not sure if you guys have anything to add, but that's kind of the takeaway from the user groups and our, you know, what was a long process to get the report done and a lot of interaction with the community. That's kind of the overarching message that, that we received. So with that, I'll turn it back over to staff.
And with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. So I just want to thank you so much for the representation, for the presentation and the report. It's, it was a very interesting and informative read. I was really surprised to see from your preface that the spending associated with mountain biking contributed to $44 million provincially to the province's economy, and $26 million of that is in Squamish alone, which is just stunning. And that means that over half of the money spent on mountain bike-associated spending provincially is happening right here in our community. I've heard a lot of feedback that that number could be much greater if we had greater hotel capacity to allow it. And it's supporting almost 300 jobs. So it just speaks to the importance and value of these trails and on a personal, social, and financial level. So a thank you to all of you in this room who have worked so hard to build and maintain these trails and to all of you who have worked hard to bring this information forward to us today. And with that, council, I'll open us up for questions. Mayor Hurford?
Yeah, thank you to everybody that engaged in this, this initiative throughout. I, this represents an absolute ton of, of work. And I'm just, the motion that we have, the staff recommended motion is to receive for information. I'm just, so, but I'm curious how we use, like, how we use this going forward. I know that this has been a deliverable that we've been looking for. I'm happy to see it. Is it safe to assume that it's come to us now that staff, that this meets the, the intent of that? Of that, like this, we're to receive for information, not necessarily endorse. I just want to make sure that where we are. So does it meet the, the requirement or the vision from the OCP and staff's assessment?
So through the Chair, I would say it partially meets because the exact wording in that OCP precursor policy is for a brand asset inventory, which encompasses trails, but as Uzi also touched on, water-based. I mean, we have so many other recreational opportunities here around climbing and water-based opportunities that this does not speak to. So I would say it partially checks the box on it, and that staff will be utilizing it when we bring forward development applications and neighborhood plan projects. So it will be a utilized document.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there were just a couple of things that I think were challenging for somebody. It's going to have a, I acknowledge also that due to the good work of volunteers and renegades out there that there's this likely a dated document as we're sitting here. However, there were a few things in there that sort of were very time-specific as speaking to the traffic from the barrier construction, which will only be for a period of time. There's mention of community forest harvesting, which was actually tied. While doing this occurred, while this project was underway, but isn't something that's necessarily ongoing. And those types of things sort of in a few, in a few spots. Was that, is that problematic in, in any way? Or is it just sort of really trying to get a snapshot of the time that this work was, and the conditions when this work was underway?
I'll speak to it, and then maybe I'll invite others if they want to. So in, in my opinion, it's, it's a bit of both. I do think it's a snapshot because the world continues to evolve, and recreation in our town continues to evolve. What it looks like today is not what it looked like five years ago or pre-pandemic, the amount of explosive growth in trail building, as an example. And when staff are bringing forward development applications, I think we do our best effort to look comprehensively at what the picture is at the current time with like the best information that we have at, at that moment in time.
Okay, thank you. And then the last piece is sort of in the conclusion, section, section 13.2. It says that it has a recommendation for us that the, the DOS should review new development applications on private property with the user groups to provide feedback and how to maintain access to the types of trails identified as important to users. And in accepting this, are we committing to some process there? Or is that to sort of a, to be developed next step from receiving something like this?
I'll go first. Sure. So through the Chair, I don't think it's a firm commitment that we're entrenching in any written policy, but it has always been our staff commitment to liaise with all the relevant stakeholder groups for any recreation that's being impacted by development applications. And there is some policy in the OCP already that's quite strong around preservation of critical connector trails. And we're following through on making sure we, like, we work through that policy.
And like you just, our, our perspective is the sort of groups was that statement was kind of leading to, this should probably lead into a master planning exercise, a trail master planning exercise. Because as you point out, the snapshot is your basis. Things are evolving. How do we want them to evolve? And I think, I think the master plan now is what done 20, it's probably over 10 years old, more than 10 years old.
Yeah, closer to 20.
Closer to 20. And so I think that's a logical thing that precipitates out from this. So that would be sort of the user group perspective.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's where my mind was going on this. It was great to see sort of the challenges piece and starting to maybe crystallize into some steps that could be taken to address those somehow over time. But the jurisdictional challenge here, I think, is, is, is huge. If it is something that, this is an important part to work through, so.
Just if I may expand on that and highlight that upcoming engagement can also happen through the official community plan update. In our current plan, we do have the major trails network inventory as a schedule to that plan. So that was done circa 2017. And so this resource can then be helpful, very helpful in us sort of identifying any updates to that trails network schedule, and then also to future policy and embedding that in the development as well, the development decisions.
Thanks, and I believe there's a comment from Ms. Church.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate similarly that the, yeah, the document, I think, The, yeah, the document, I think hopefully will aid which user groups are interested in which areas and which ones. They will feel easier to engage on, on these processes. And we hope that that will help facilitate that. And as easy said, that, that the. Idea of master planning in the future is probably something that we'll need to complement this later on. But hopefully the, the refinement of this helps at least direct which user groups you will see are the most interested in which areas and, and why.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to do a little time check for council. It is 1:58. We're meant to finish this conversation at two, but I have councillor Penkil next up on questions.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, two questions. I think the first staff was to sort of pick up, uh, the current conversation. So from staff's perspective, if, if there's no council direction. This just becomes something that staff generally feel will be referenced with development proposals. For, or is there a plan to sort of extract key elements and build them into updated DPA guidelines? Or, you know, this goes into subdivision control bylaw somehow like, or that's something that would only happen if council directed it. Like, what are the likely or possible next steps and how would that happen?
So through the chair, there's no plan to kind of integrate this into any of our district bylaws at this point. But as Sarah alluded to, it's likely that we'll look at this document as part of the OCP update. So.
Yeah, for sure. And I think that the policy that we have existing in the Parks and Recreation section around trail network assets. Is strong enough directing because it points to the inventory of existing trails. And to look to that inventory, and this essentially is that inventory of existing trails with all of the value components that are identified. So it's like the working document that we can pull into our work, um, following our, our existing policy. So we don't see sort of a, a need necessarily to add sort of another layer here. It's just. Utilizing this and bringing it as a key resource for all of that work and following policy that's quite strong.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then for Uzi, um, I, I appreciate the sort of shift in direction and, and the information provided in the surveys. But I, I'm not totally clear if we. You know, why we didn't also include, uh, usage data from something like a Strava? Or did we look at that and sort of see if the usage data in an area lined up with the, you know, what we heard is this areas. Is appreciated and the usage data actually aligns with that? Or did we look at that sort of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the, the, the short answer is yes, we did some of that. I turned it over to Nicoletto, sort of revert back to the methodology. And, and what all the data inputs were.
Yeah. So off the top of my head, I'm definitely not going to remember the inputs, but we definitely, um, originally looked to review. User use data, but user use data is actually quite hard to get. It's not just publicly available. We did do some like, um. Screen grabs and raster moving so that we could see how well those kind of are lined up. We did, um, review Trail Forks check-ins and popularities which are public. And all of it does align in a very similar way. Um, everything aligned pretty similarly to all the advisory groups. Ret like suggestions of what trails they felt were the most important and those that are listed. And it, and it all kind of definitely echoed each other for sure.
If I could just follow up there in terms of, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, I get the sense it's, the data is available, but it maybe would cost you something to get it. So do we have an order of magnitude sense of like, would this add 2,000 or 20,000 or $200,000 to a project of this sort? To sort of get sort of all the data that Strava has, for example, on this area for a year?
So, um, uh, Trail Forks were volunteered their data and that, and that was good. I think you could. I don't know the technicalities specifically about getting. Public use data, the costs and the privacy associated with those things. But I don't know if you would learn any more than we've already learned throughout this process, to be really honest with you. Seeing use data, being relatively familiar, at least from a personal bike park perspective, bike perspective. And discussing with the user groups, I don't think you would maybe get much bang for your buck if you did consider paying for that. But it's definitely something you could look into for sure.
Okay. Next I have councillor French followed by councillor Stoner on my speakers list.
Thanks, Chair. Super valuable information. Thank you very much for doing this work. Reading through it took me back to the early 1990s and the many hours I spent on the business end of a shovel, building Mike's Loop and Made in the Shade. And really highlighted for me the new trails that I had no idea existed because I spent the last six years in this windowless room. So keen to use some of what I learned about new trails to get out on my bike and discover some of them. I'm curious though to know about, um, updating and upkeep because I, one of the things that struck me is this is going to become outdated quickly. We're growing so fast and trail impacts are imminent. So could you tell me a little bit about where the thinking is with updates and keeping this information current?
Yep. Okay. So from a staff perspective, this is a great resource, but we also know that it's constantly evolving. And around that, when we're reviewing development applications, we'll be ensuring that we ask for the most recent. Mapping to make sure we're aware of everything on the trail. But I think intrinsically what they've done here is captured for each of the various zones, the values of those zones. So Alice Lake values, slabs, views, all those kinds of things that different trails in that network are not going to shift those like core values of that zone. And so I think from that perspective, this document is helpful for that and that that isn't going to shift dramatically over time.
Yeah, I mean, um, we have a trail crew. We're out monitoring. We see anything new that's not built by Sorka. We maintain trails under our partnership agreement with RSTPC. You know, we're in constant contact with, with our colleague groups. So keeping an ongoing inventory wouldn't be that difficult. I mean, it, it would take some focused effort. But, but I think as Asia says, like, we've got the solid base. Anything's incremental and I don't believe. Anything that's going on now is we're going to fundamentally shift evaluations that have come out. So I think this is valid for a period of time. Certainly a master planning exercise would be good to project forward, but in the interim, you know, if we have to do an update, it wouldn't be that difficult to do.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks. And councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, I think in follow-up to councillor French's question, um, how much of this is actually? Kind of digitized and usable? So can we expect that this would be on our GIS mapping system through the district? Or is it really just a static PDF? Like, what is the actual format behind a lot of the maps and the information that we have collected here?
Yep, through the chair. So, um, our GIS team actually liaises with Trail Forks team who are based in Squamish. And we get at least an annual update to add any new trails to the network into our GIS system. Some of the trails are hidden or are not necessarily like advertised out in the public, but they go into like an internal GIS layer. So that emergency staff in particular, for example, some of the DeBex fire where they were using all of the trails network. So we get updates regularly.
Does that include the elements of this project, like the staging areas, the rock component, like the rock climbing components? Like, it's not just the map of the trails, it's the values that we compiled in this document. How do those get relayed?
We can definitely have some more discussion and review around that in terms of what additional attributes or components could be. Maybe like added as metadata to our trail layer. Um, that discussion hasn't happened yet. But certainly we will be doing more work to sort of review what's, uh, what elements are digital and what maybe we can do to. Add information to our, our information base, um, our spatial database.
That's everything for me. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks. Um, do you have another question? I was just wondering if there's been any interface with Google, like Google Maps? Because I know I've looked up sometimes like trying to get somewhere and granted, there are the bigger trails that I'm talking about, but there's still trails. And Google will tell me something very silly in terms of just increasing the usability.
I'm going to ask Nicola if she wants to. I don't think we utilize that.
No, uh, Google Maps would not be something that we would consider integrating into our analysis. They use, uh, network analysis as you look for trails and locations. And yes, I've, I've also seen how they send you in directions in which you wouldn't want to go. The general focus of that kind of thing is normally to use a very specific thing. So you would be using all, all trails or trail forks or hopefully, you know, like the DOS. Web map to find your location and, and you, you know, work out what the best way to go. And I think that would probably be the recommendation generally.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. I suspect that conversation lies more with the active transportation network anyways. I, I generally use Trail Forks when I'm using trails too. And I was just wondering, I noticed in the user groups, there's, uh, no user group for climbing, but I did see some feedback from the, uh, community at large that was climbing related. Do you, do you feel like that's sufficient?
Yes. Chair, the Squamish Access Society was involved in the process.
Oh, right. Sorry. Okay, good. Okay. Um, well, I, are there any further questions? Do you have one more? Okay, it is 2:09.
I was going to move a staff recommendation and speak to it.
Seconding? Okay, so moved by Mayor Hurford, seconded by councillor Anderson. Comments?
Yeah, just, um, I'll be brief. Thank you so much for the, for the work. I know this has been a long time. In, in coming, but I, I, I think the document that we've, we've received is very, uh, very thoughtful and, um, and shows a high level of engagement with. The various, um, user groups and interested, interested parties. I, I think that a sort of a, a next step, this like master plan concept, this type of, this type of thing, I think. Has such a, is an important step to address some of those concern pieces in a, in a really holistic way. But and continued engagement with the SLRD in Squamish Nation, which, uh, I know were part of the consultation process. And, and likely tenure holders. And, you know, it gets more and more complex as we, as we dig into it. Is important to actually realize that, but, um, this is an important step. And, uh, and yeah, I even, um, found some, although I consider myself fairly knowledgeable in the trails, I did find some new, some new pieces that I haven't quite spotted before. So I'll also be heading back out to tick off a few that aren't on my list. So thank you very much.
Councillor Penkil?
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate the efforts and the collaboration that went into this. I, I do sort of wonder if there is value in something prior to a master planning of. Getting, you know, the zones and the related values at least maybe articulated somewhere. And, and I guess partly what I'm wrestling with is, you know, it was discussed in the presentation how there, there is conflicts about. How we preserve the trail values versus the need to develop, which may interfere with some of these things. And so what is the priority we are putting on, on these particular things as opposed to all the other reports and stuff that we can reference? And so, um, you know, how do we articulate more clearly which are the most important pieces of this? And, and how do those weigh against other considerations? Not going to propose an answer here, but something I think deserves some more thought and maybe more discussions with, with Sorka and some of the other groups. So that would be my only sort of thought, but otherwise it's fantastic. And I really appreciate having this. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Anderson.
I'm going to start by making a comment or two about the preface that accompanies this report. And I hope I won't be taken the wrong way, but the first four paragraphs of this preface I don't think are necessary. And they venture into describing the history of this economy of Squamish and various industries that are full of inaccuracies. And I don't think it's necessary that this type of report venture into this instead, and this is a comment for staff. Our OCP should be the source for a high-level, accurate account of Squamish economic history and vision for the future. So, uh, one of the comments made here in that preface is that where outdoor recreation was once a byproduct working in resource industries, in fact, it still is. And the evidence of that is in the report in the discussion of the Garibaldi Park Road. Who pays for that? Who, who are we going to work with to address the staging issues, the parking issues, the maintenance issues of that road? Well, it's the province, but in fact, it's not the province. It's the resource industry companies that pay 100%. Of the maintenance of that road and every other Forest Service road that is referenced here. We have to keep that in his mind and work together because maybe that needs to change, but that's the fact of it today. We are still outdoor recreation being accessed, being a byproduct of the resource industries. Comment regarding the lava flow section. Maybe it might deserve consideration to mention that Slail Watuth Nation, they are the largest forest tenure holder in the Mamquon Valley. And we might give some consideration. It is a business arm, but it's one that the nation is very proud of and a project that they're very proud of. In that section is also mentioned the Squamish Community Forest. It's the only place it's mentioned. But in fact, the Squamish Community Forest encompasses nearly all of the areas, except the very northerly part, discussed cat lake of this report. And the Squamish Community Forest website and the staff, the management staff, they are going to be a resource. There are excellent maps on that website showing and alleviating confusions about where the other tenures are, overlapping tenures. Private lands, where the Squamish Station private lands, distinct from reserved lands. So I see the Squamish Community Forest as being an inevitable valuable partner. It's always important to have good orientation about tenure holders, land ownership. This will serve us well. And they will be good partners because the management team is working for these other actors as well. Finally, we're, we're always welcoming your suggestions regarding, uh, our partners here regarding improvements to access where investments could be made. And there are a number of good suggestions in the report, Sorka and Trails Society, uh, among them, making these suggestions. It is so fortunate that we have you five organizations. I'll bet there's lots of places that don't. And we, we so much, we should realize how much we depend on you as stable, active, strong organizations and partners for integrated management. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, with that, I just wanted to say thank you once again for all your hard work and, uh, for, uh, just highlighting the extent and importance of these trails in our community. I think this is a really valuable piece of information that's going to help guide and facilitate decision-making around this table for a lot of years to come. So thank you so much. And with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Unanimously. Okay. I don't know if we need a couple of minutes. Okay, we'll just take a five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 2:20 to just, uh, switch over staff. Thanks. Quick in today's meeting is the temporary use permit, TUP 80 for WLNG Temporary Floating Workforce Accommodations, Flotel 1 and Flotel 2, presented by Ms. Hay and Mr. Villanischkis. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Robyn Hay, planner with the Community Planning Department. I am joined by Jonas Villanischkis, Senior Director of Community Planning. Today's presentation will focus on the temporary use permit related to the WLNG flotels. The committee report for this item was recently updated to change the naming convention from temporary use permit number 80 to temporary use permit number TU 000080. For your information, I'll be covering the following key points. Background information and project information, OCP alignment, as well as community benefit, security deposit, and public engagement information. I'll also be seeking council's direction to bring forward the temporary use permit for consideration in accordance with legislative requirements for public notification without holding a public hearing. The WLNG facility underwent environmental assessments from 2013 to 2015 and received approvals from the BC Environmental Assessment Office, or BCEAO, the Squamish Nation, and the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada, or IAC. Construction of this facility began in 2023 and the project evaluation is targeted for the end of 2027. This temporary use permit application does not extend to the WLNG facility itself or the Fortis BC Pipeline currently under construction. To support the construction of the facility, WLNG proposed temporary worker accommodation at the project site in the form of a flotel. In 2023, the BCEAO approved an amendment to the Environmental Assessment Certificate to allow flotel 1, with new conditions requiring gender and cultural safety plan, worker health and wellness plan, flotel and workplace cultural committee, access to travel restrictions, flotel air quality, and noise monitoring. Following the BCEAO approval, the Squamish Nation also amended its environmental assessment agreement to include flotel 1. Additional authorizations have been granted by Vancouver Coastal Health, Transport Canada, the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, or DFO, and the BC Energy Regulator. Flotel 1 has been lured at the WLNG site and occupied since June 2024 in accordance with the provincial order requiring WLNG to use the flotel for non-local worker accommodation as per the Environmental Assessment Certificate. The BCEAO has clarified, clarified that under the community charter, the district may issue a TUP as long as it does not conflict with the Environmental Assessment Certificate. The temporary use permit seeks to bring flotel 1, shown in gray, into compliance with the district's land use regulations and authorize the second flotel, flotel 2, shown in blue. Flotel 1 includes approximately 650 single occupancy cabins. It is proposed to remain in place through the end of construction in 2027. Since it became operational, the district has received no formal complaints and no compliance or enforcement issues have been reported by the BCEAO. As workers are housed onboard with limited community access, potential impacts are largely contained within the vessel. As the project has progressed, WLNG has identified a need for additional worker housing to stay on schedule and is proposing flotel 2. Flotel 2 would include approximately 630 single occupancy cabins. It is proposed to be in place by November 2025 and operate for roughly two years. It would operate under the same conditions, EAO management plans, and protocols as flotel 1. In addition to the district's TUP, WLNG will seek approvals from relevant regulatory bodies, including the BCEAO, Squamish Nation, IAC, DFO, Transport Canada, and Vancouver Coastal Health. There are no restrictions preventing the district from authorizing the TUP in advance of other regulatory approvals. The draft TUP requires all approvals to be secured before the TUP is released. This, this ensures the district's land use decision aligns with broader regulatory frameworks while respecting jurisdictional boundaries. The TUP provides council with a mechanism to consider the temporary use of land for workforce housing. The TUP does not regulate marine installations, operational procedures, or environmental approvals related to the flotels themselves. These aspects fall primarily under the jurisdiction of senior levels of government whose decisions often take precedent and may supersede local government authority. The table on the next three slides highlights how the TUP aligns with the limited evaluation criteria for TUPs as outlined in the OCP. So number one, demonstration that the use is temporary in nature. The flotels are intended to support temporary workforce housing during the construction phase of the facility, which is expected to be complete by the end of 2027. The existing land use. There have been no active uses on the land since the closure of the Wood Fiber Pulp Mill in 2006. The site is currently zoned general industrial, which is intended for activities such as manufacturing, transportation, and the shipment of bulk goods. Residential uses, including temporary workforce accommodation, are not permitted under this zoning. Therefore, a temporary use permit is required to authorize this use on a temporary basis. The OCP land use destination for this parcel is Marine Gateway, which supports marine-related uses such as shipping, terminals, and vessel storage. The surrounding land uses. The site is located at the southwestern edge of the district with no road access and a high degree of seclusion. The surrounding area is largely forested. Number four, potential conflict with residential uses. There are no residential uses near the site. Number five, potential impacts of environmentally sensitive areas. Environmental impacts related to flotel 1 have been reviewed by the DFO and the project, including flotel 1 received a Fisheries Act authorization. As a result of this federal approval, a district DPA 1 permit is not required. Flotel 2 will also be reviewed by the DFO and district staff will assess whether a DPA permit is required based on the outcome of that review. As outlined in the draft TUP, all required external approvals must be obtained before the permit is released. Under the draft conditions, no waste, including sewage or wastewater, will be discharged in Squamish or the house sound. Waste will be transferred by barge to facilities outside of the district. Number six, provision of adequate servicing that meets health requirements. Flotel 1 holds all required permits from Vancouver Coastal Health. Flotel 2 will be required to obtain similar approvals, ensuring compliance with public health standards. Number seven, duration of the proposed temporary use. In accordance with the Local Government Act, a TUP can be issued for a term up to three years and can be renewed once for additional term of three years. The TUP is proposed for a three-year duration. Then rate, relevant policies within other sections of this plan. OCP objectives speak to addressing the need for housing generated by industrial projects and employer-assisted housing programs. Now moving to other TUP considerations. The Henrietta Lake Dam discharges into house sound by Wood Fiber Creek. Staff have determined that neither hazard assessment or DPA 2 permit is required. It is important to clarify that staff have considered the risks to the flotels specifically as low rather than the overall risk of a Henrietta Lake Dam failure. The low risk to the flotels is based on a dam breach study by a qualified environmental professional, which concluded that any wave at the flotel location would be comparable to an average wind-induced wave and well below a five-year wave height. And the fact that flotels are designed to float and withstand wave action. It is further noted that DPA 2 criteria does not apply to the flotels. In terms of lighting, in accordance with the EAO management plans, all project lighting must comply with the International Commission of Illumination's guidelines to minimize light pollution while ensuring safety. Key lighting requirements include directing light away from sensitive areas, installing controls such as timer sensors and motion detectors for non-essential lighting, limiting lighting intensity to the minimum necessary, and selecting lighting that minimize the UV emission. Lighting implementation reports are submitted to the Squamish Nation every six months during construction. If monitoring identifies light-related concerns, additional mitigation, mitigation measures will be considered. Flotel 2 would be subject to the same lighting standards, monitoring, and reporting as flotel 1. Under the draft permit, all workers residing on the flotels, including ancillary staff such as medical and food service personnel, must be transported to the site by ferry from the lower mainland. In accordance with the Environmental Assessment Certificate, flotel residents are not permitted to access the district for recreation or non-work-related purposes via marine transportation. And workers who are not residents of the district before September 20th, 2023, are required to reside on the flotel unless exemption is granted under extenuating circumstances. Workers exempt from the flotel residency access the site by Daryl Bay Ferry Terminal. As they are not part of the flotel accommodation program, their movement is outside of the scope of this TUP and any associated traffic impact should be considered separately. Minimal traffic impacts within the district are anticipated as a result of the flotel as the marine-based transportation approach helps reduce pressure on local roads and infrastructure. Additional details regarding medical services, health, safety, wellness, emergency management, operational procedures, and security measures are provided in the committee, committee report for information purposes. These elements are not part of the land use consideration and should not be factored into the decision on the issuance of temporary use permit 80. As part of the application, WLNG offered a $300,000 voluntary community benefit proposed to help offset construction costs for the Brennan Park splash pad. A $2 million security deposit has also been offered. The TUP draft condition requires this to be provided prior to the release of the permit. The security deposit would be released upon expiry of the permit, provided no further decommissioning or site restoration is required. If the security deposit does not fully cover any outstanding costs to the district, the permit holder will be responsible for the remaining amount in accordance with the draft TUP conditions. A public information meeting, or PAM, led by the applicant, was held on July 2nd. Approximately 16 members of the public attended. The application was posted on the district's development showcase and the PAM was advertised on the district's webpage and e-news. It was also advertised in the Squamish Chief and on the WLNG social media channels. As per legislative requirements, a public, a public notification must be published in the Squamish Chief and sent to surrounding landowners at least 10 days prior to council consideration of the TUP. Under the Local Government Act, a public hearing is not required for a TUP. Given, given that the public notification obligations are being met and a public engagement opportunity has already occurred, a formal public hearing is not proposed. Now turning to the recommendation. The recommendation is that council receives the TU 80 report for information and direct staff to bring forward TU 80 for consideration in accordance with legislative requirements for public notification without holding a public hearing. Thank you. And at this time, I welcome any comments or questions.
Thanks. Thanks for that presentation. I'll open the floor to questions, council. Mayor Hurford?
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. My question is, the, I'm trying to make sure I have the regulatory bodies and their requirements correct in my mind. So I can ask some clarifying questions in that general category. I'm looking at the, the proposed terms in the, the conditions of the, of the permit. And, you know, it says that all other approvals should be in, should be in place generally. But then it speaks about waste management, which waste management, I know is our sort of area to regulate, but it's also the EA certificate speaks to these regulations. So, and, and similarly with the transportation. So I just wondered about the inclusion of them here. Why do they need to be here if it's the EA and we're duplicating? Is that not a duplication as that was part of the, the permit? Even though it is generally an area that we would regulate?
Yeah, so the chair, I assume you're talking about condition three, about waste management there?
I'm going to say three and five, I think, are both EA conditions as well as. Is there value in duplicating? Is that intentional? I think it's interesting that to me EA stuff kind of came into our sphere. So how do we untangle that and how is staff thinking about that in recommending these?
Yeah, so the chair, I just think this is a, a safe. Yeah, so the chair, I just think this is a safeguard for the district. I mean, this was on the previous temporary use permit application, and the W L N G, the applicant, did not have a concern with including this particular permit condition here. It simply just states that all waste must be disposed of outside of the district, which which is their intention. So yeah, we just left this condition in the permit.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering about, the reason I'm asking is this, there's this piece around which bodies regulating what? And given that it's in the E A, does it need to be here? It simplifies, it safeguards us is what I'm is what I'm hearing, and that's the rationale for including it here rather than leaving it to the it's already explicitly outlined in the in the E A certificate?
That's right. That's the approach we took here.
Jake.
Sorry, is this on this?
Yeah, on this particular point, I had a very related question. So my understanding, there are areas where concurrent regulation is permitted, like they have to meet our regulation and provincial and federal, whatever. There's other places where, you know, if the E A O says something, then we can't have any input. It's not clear to me which is which, and, you know, I worry that just, you know, the E A O, they can ask for amendments. And so if it's not in our permit, we have no protection. So I'd like to make sure that everywhere we can regulate things that are important to us, that we are. So how do we get the clarity of of which, you know, which areas we can regulate concurrently and which ones we're not allowed to? Because it sort of speaks to, the report speaks to what different bodies are doing and what exists, but not where we could go further or we couldn't go further. So how do we get that understanding?
So the chair, I feel like that's probably on a case-by-case basis. If you have a consideration or issue that want to be addressed, we would have to consider that each individual topic.
So we have to sort of come up the big list. It's a big list of all the things we're concerned about, and then staff would go through and have to explain each one why we can or can't. And here's the legal precedent or legal sort of part of the L G A that says, yes, you can or you can't. Or is that? Is that how we would?
Yeah, through the chair, staff have reviewed the temporary use permit application and come up with these draft permit conditions, which we feel like are in scope of the temporary use permit application and are applicable and useful and in accordance with the jurisdiction, our jurisdiction. So that's what we're proposing in these draft permit conditions.
Okay, if I could just also add, we've sort of went through this exercise when the first flotile was being proposed, and we looked at, you know, our scope of jurisdiction and what could and could be included. So what we ended up in Flotail Two and One, this latest iteration of the U Ps is a byproduct of that process as well.
Okay, yeah, new questions have come up for me since that last presentation, and I I'm looking for that legal justification. So I'll leave this for now, but I'll maybe come back to this.
Okay, I do have a speaker's list, but if this is on this, then, okay, Counselor French.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I too have waste management questions, and this one in particular comes quite nicely in with the previous question. So in the Bridgman's Report on waste management, it specifically says wastewater is to be brought to Site B in January of twenty twenty-five. So a few months back for transfer to the wastewater treatment plant in Squamish. Now, I suspect that's not happening because our wastewater, our improved upgraded wastewater treatment plant isn't there yet. But what I am getting from where we're at in in this discussion is we're not ever going to accept wastewater at the Squamish Treatment Plant. So can you set us straight on this? Or does this commit the wastewater from Wood Fiber always going to Abbotsford? Or is there going to be consideration in future when our wastewater treatment plant is ready to start accepting these volumes to have that wastewater treated here in Squamish?
Yeah, through the chair. So condition three on the draft permit says that all waste resulting from the temporary use permit must be disposed of outside of the district unless otherwise authorized by the district. So this would also include wastewater. So there's no we would not be accepting any wastewater through the W L N G project, the flotile project at this time.
Unless otherwise authorized.
That's right. Unless there was some type of agreement and understanding and provided the district was willing to accept that, which they are not at this time.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks. Okay, next up on my speaker list. Okay. Sorry, Counselor Stoner, I'm coming to you. Just give me a minute.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to finish. I, my other question was around the the term of the permit. And I just wanted to make to understand if if this is successful, that we're not, are we backdating? Are we a year into the permit from Hotel One that has been there for a year? Or does a permit date? And this is just a process thing, or would it be the date that we've issued? That it the permit was issued or the or it was brought into compliance through a permit that was issued?
Yeah, through the chair, the proposal is for a three-year term, which would commence when the permit is issued.
Okay, thank you. And that and then a renewal there unless explicitly laid out would be at the discretion of of staff as a due process. So if council wanted to to be involved in a renewal, we would need to, would that need to be explicit to this permit or to through some other motion?
Through the chair, the any renewal application would be subject to council approval.
So as as we see here, that's what's what's there? Okay. Oh, is it? Does this make it above the threshold that that would be delegated to staff on renewal? Is that what it is?
Yeah, through the chair, I believe that's how we set up the previous permit setup so that it had to come back to council, and this would be the same.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, a few questions. So appreciate the context and the description of the hazard assessment. The staff report speaks to and references the Henrietta Lake Dam breach and consequence classification analysis that was done by a third party. But that study isn't available. I'm just wondering if it's possible to make that publicly available as we have done in the past with risk hazard assessments for development applications.
Yeah, through the chair, the hazard assessment study referenced in the report is currently confidential, and staff have requested W and have requested to make this public. And so we're just waiting on a response from the applicant.
Okay, yeah, that would be very helpful and something that I think I would like to see made available for consideration. And then subsequent to that, I am curious. We do have some O C P policy around requiring safe harmless covenants for hazardous properties. Appreciate that this isn't a development permit per se, but it is the closest thing that we get to in terms of permitting residential on an industrial site that we know has some level of hazard. So are we able to include a safe harmless clause with regard to the risk in order to protect the district going forward?
Through the chair, we we've looked at this, and temporary use permits or any other sort of municipal permit is not a good tool for a safe harmless clause, just because it's not a it's not the same as a covenant, which is what we would normally use for land development applications, say, in a flood hazard area. So it's possible to include, but they don't hold a lot of water, is our understanding. And a thing such as a restricted covenant would be very challenging to register here, given that it's a it's a it's a crown lot essentially owned by the owned by the province. And so registering a covenant against crown lots is very challenging. So that would be the appropriate tool to do that. But we're going to continue examining this item as we get closer to presenting the application for council decision.
Okay, that's helpful context and appreciate the additional work. For me, I either or both making sure that that document is public and or especially if we can't make that document public, making sure that we have covered ourselves. Not being able to understand the true risk presented there is would be important to me going forward. My other question is around the security deposit, which is currently sitting at two million in the T U P. And I heard you miss hay when you said that the permit holder would be responsible for any outstanding amount beyond the two million. Although we know that if something were to go really sideways, and they were just to kind of fold as a corporation, we wouldn't really have much support or leverage to actually get that money back. In our previous iteration of this conversation, we had gotten to a ten million dollar line of credit or a letter of credit of some sort in order to provide some further safeguard, and that was just for one vessel, not two vessels. And so I'm wondering why we are sitting here with a two million dollar amount in the draft T U P for a security deposit. That feels very low.
Thank you. Through the chair. So the security amount needs to be reasonable and is intended to guarantee the performance of the terms of the permit. So L N G has offered two million dollars, and staff have had an external consultant confirm that this is a reasonable amount. It's noted that the project is very heavily regulated. And then if there was issues related to contamination or the like, this would be a multi-layered jurisdictional issue. And the district would work closely with other project regulators on a collaborative approach. But the district is unlikely to be the lead on this type of enforcement front. So the two million dollars in this case was determined by staff to be a reasonable amount.
Appreciate that response, and I would like to challenge it a little bit for consideration as we go forward. So the multi-jurisdictional nature of this project is one of the most challenging components. And we know that often local governments, even though they are not the lead agency, end up being the ones who hold the bag at the end of the day. And so I just like to challenge that as well as if if a permit were to come forward or an application were to come forward, if there's space to provide maybe not a larger security deposit, but similar to the previous conversation of providing a letter of credit or something that was less impactful on their cash flow, but equally as supportable to us in terms of protecting the district a little bit in a worst-case scenario. That is something that I would be interested in hearing more about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Counselor Peddengill, followed by Counselor Hamilton, and then Counselor French.
Yeah, thanks. And just watching the pace, I do, and I forwarded my list of questions. It was late last night. We didn't have a lot of time with the agenda. So I am, there's a lot of outstanding questions for me, I think, are important for me to hear to make a decision and for the public to hear to provide me feedback before a decision. So I'd like, you know, to understand how, I'll go as far as I can, but how we might get these questions addressed before permit comes back to us. So I'll just sort of start in, just sort of make a comment around the the lack of complaints. This is right now not a flotile that's not permitted. And so I I do question whether or not people would sort of bother making complaints against something that they already see operating as unpermitted and don't see anything happening. So why bother making a complaint? And so I think that has to be considered in our assessment of the level of complaints. I am really struck by the wording in the report and also in the introduction, which seems to just totally bypass the fact that I believe we have verbal and written confirmation that the E A O order does not negate wood fibers requirement to have a T U P and to comply with our rules. And so as I understand it, as it stands now, they are non-compliant with our regulations, and nothing in the E A O order absolves them of that. So that is that accurate?
That is correct. Through the chair, yeah.
Okay, I'd be, maybe it's for a side topic, but I'm interested to know why we haven't been explicit in that. It's it's important to a number of people, I think. I'm just sort of wondering, and maybe I missed it, but right now, or how do we put in conditions so that we are very clear about who can use this flotile? And and what the accountability mechanisms are and so on. Because I've heard wood fiber say, oh, we don't plan to use it for anything else. But it's also been made clear to me that there's nothing in the E A O or other other certifications that restrict this to wood fiber-only employees. And I don't see an accountability mechanism and so on. And we may want to provide that use or allow that use. But for me, that's a different use, requires different verification, a different understanding of the accountability, different impacts at Daryl Bay. And so how do we make sure that we are clear that the permit limits it to the workers that have been applied for and that we've understood and assessed who will be using it and what the impacts are? So, you know, yeah.
So the chair, so this is a temporary use permit for a temporary residential use. And we don't have the authority to regulate the users. We can only regulate the use. So in this case, the restriction is that all flotile residents, whether or not they're W L N G workers or not, have to come to site by vessel through the lower mainland, and that is the restriction.
So with your respect, that's in the current E A O, which could be amended, and it's specific to wood fiber. It is not applied to other projects. Wood fiber and forests have been adamant that these are distinct projects and need to be assessed separately. In my mind, unless I'm misunderstanding, a single proponent with a single sort of accountability path and a housing solution for their workforce is fundamentally different than a use that is general flotile accommodations for multiple unknown projects in the corridor under who knows what sort of regulations. Like, these seem to be fundamentally different uses. And so can we? Or how can we ensure in our T U P that's specific to the actual use needed and has the appropriate considerations of traffic impacts and so on? So, you know, if we are considering that this may be used for other users, say, for us and so on, can we get the assessment of what that would mean in terms of Daryl Bay impacts and so on, if other workers from other projects are also using this?
So the chair, we do not have jurisdiction to regulate who resides on the flotile. So there shouldn't be any impacts from flotile residents on Daryl Bay because there is a restriction in the temporary use permit that everyone should be coming up from the lower mainland.
Sorry, but with all due respect, my understanding is that's an E A O condition for the wood fiber E A O, like.
Sorry, Ms. Glendale.
Thank you. Through the chair, if I might. Respectfully, this would be a debate among council around the jurisdiction. Staff are just providing the facts on what the temporary use permit can and cannot regulate. Thank you. Counselor Peddengill.
But Ms. Glendale, what I'm not understanding is references being made to restrictions on on a on the the use of how workers get to and from the flotile. But my understanding is that that is specific to wood fiber workers and not specific to a flotile. So if other workers from other projects were also on those flotile, none of those things would apply to them. This would only apply to wood fiber workers and wood fibers use of the flotile, not other projects. And so I I I believe there are factual inconsistencies here, which I'm trying to understand how we deal with that.
Mr. Villanueva.
I think we're maybe talking about two different things. One is the temporary use permit, which says all workers residing on Flotail One and Two must be transported to and from the lower mainland or outside of district locations. Right? So we're just talking about the temporary experiment and not what other approvals are doing.
Okay, I appreciate that. I wasn't aware. I'm getting, there's so many conditions on what we can and can't regulate. I was under the impression we couldn't maybe regulate the transportation and so that's helpful. I appreciate that. That maybe leads into my next question, then. There are, and I was just at the Ocean Watch Committee meeting, but there are still ongoing complaints about that very shuttle for There are, and I was just at the Ocean Watch Committee meeting, but there are still ongoing complaints about that very shuttle for workers, the noise, the speeds and the wakes. And even with the apparent muffler upgrades, I'm still hearing these complaints. These are impacts to neighboring uses. So can we put further conditions on the nature of that shuttle, how it's operated and verification and accountability? Because it is impacting neighbor properties all the way down to Horseshoe Bay.
Through the chair, so the vessel traffic is regulated by the B C E A O at the management plants. So associated concerns happen and should be flagged with the appropriate regulator, who is the B C E A O. And I understand in conversations with them and W L N G that there's ongoing conversations and they're trying to resolve some of those issues that have been highlighted. I know that they've, you know, reducing the speed of the vessels and they've installed some new muffler systems. So I think they're working closely together to try and resolve those issues, but it is a known issue for those vessels.
Yeah, with so, and it's been going on for months. And I just heard on Friday, these are all still ongoing issues. So it doesn't seem like much progress is being made. And so does that mean then our, we, we, our only option is to say, like, this is too much of an impact on neighboring uses. We can't get into the granularity of the vessels, so we have to just say no to the T U P if we're uncomfortable with these impacts.
The, through the chair, the transportation vessels is well beyond the temporary use permit ability to to regulate our jurisdiction. So this wouldn't be a valid consideration to include in the temporary experiment.
And so this goes into some of the legal questions I had, like what is the, where in the Local Government Act or precedent is?
Counselor Peddengill, I'm going to let you finish this one, and then we're just going to let some other people ask questions.
I'm looking for, because I don't see in the Local Government Act or Community Charter where it says we can't consider these things. And in my mind, like our O C P clearly says, we should consider neighboring land uses, residential land uses. The, because especially of the E A O conditions, this specific vessel traffic is unavoidably linked and mandated. And so if we approve like this, to my mind, I don't see how you can separate the flotel from these noise impacts. It doesn't matter if it's transportation thing, it is directly and inextricably linked. And so, and we do seem to have the ability to care about impacts on neighboring land uses. So I, how do we get, I guess, the understanding of how the law says legally what says we cannot consider this?
Staff have taken the, these permanent conditions through a process to review how it compares to our general practice, other practices and legal practices. And that is how we ended up with the conditions that we have. And I can tell you specifically that the mode of transportation, especially because it's also happening outside of our jurisdiction to and from the flotel is certainly beyond the scope of a temporary use permit.
Okay, I, for me, I'm looking for something more substantial than we've compared it to other things we've done in the past. I'm looking for clear legal, but I'll leave it there for now.
Counselor Stoner, is this in responses conversation or I saw your hand disappear.
I was just going to start debating with my colleague, but I will refrain from doing so. But I would argue that that is a question to council, not to our staff.
Okay, well, maybe we'll leave that till a bit later. I have Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much. Mayor Hereford brought this up, the duration of the permit. It seems interesting to me for the duration of the permit to be three years, starting from the the date of issuance as opposed to the date that the vessel arrived. If we acknowledge, we seem to all acknowledge that a temporary use permit is required and is appropriate in this case. And I think it's fair, I think it would be fair to put a three-year time limit from the date of arrival of the first vessel. Is it within council's discretion to put an expiration date of T U P eighty to be 21st of June, 2027? Which is three years from the date of the arrival of the first vessel.
Yeah, through the chair, the the date of the T U P is discretionary, so I don't see any technical issues with that. Just noting that the applicant has requested a three-year term. And so, you know, it's potentially likely they will come back for an extension.
Absolutely, entirely possible. That also, that possibility of extension also leads to the possibility of vessel one being there for seven years, which is, seems to be not, not in the spirit of three plus three T U P policy. The other question, my other question is following on from Counselor Stoner's questioning on the security deposit and the daily amount. To me, I I struggled with $2 million as a security deposit for a single vessel. And now we're saying $2 million as a security deposit for two vessels. In my mind, it's not, I I don't see the logic there. And so the only amount of security deposit I would consider is $2 million per vessel and a $10,000 daily allowance per vessel. Yeah, because I see this as doubling the amount that was in the initial T U P. Is that within council's discretion or not within council's discretion to request the amount of the security deposit and daily amount?
Through the chair, the secure deposits for, especially for temporary experiments, they're always a little bit convoluted in that it's kind of a guesstimate of what it will take to remediate or restore the site. So that's one thing. And so it's never perfect, the amount that we land on. We went to some effort to clarify or confirm that this is a reasonable amount. And then we essentially need to get agreement with the applicant, that this is a security deposit that they would be willing to to deposit. So we'll take that away and we will give council an update when we come back. On the daily amount, the daily amount is aligned with our zoning bylaw, maximum penalty for a daily, for a daily amount. So that's what we, that's how we landed on that amount, whether it's one boat or two boats. I don't know if it makes a lot of difference in terms of the maximum amount we can charge for an infraction. So we'll take that away as well to 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 review. But we've gone to some extent in reviewing the daily amount and what would be appropriate and aligning it with the maximum in the zoning bylaw seems to be the most appropriate way to include it.
Thanks. I hadn't appreciated that the 10,000 was coming from the maximum amount in our zoning bylaw before. That's valuable information. This, this question is is a little bit offside and not directly applied here, but can you remind me, what's the max? What's our daily penalty for a short-term rental, one-night short-term rental? Being out of bylaw, being if a short-term rental is rented for one night, what's the penalty there?
I believe it's $500 a night, but we'd have to confirm that.
Thanks.
Okay, I have Counselor French. Then I was going to ask some questions and then we'll go around again, I guess, just to be mindful of time. It is 3:05, which is when we were supposed to finish this conversation. So Counselor French.
Thank you, Chair. I want to shift over to the $300,000 community amenity contribution. And I expect that these questions, the answer may be it's too soon to answer, and I'll accept that. So this $300,000 would be paid when?
Through the chair, the $300,000 would be paid upon release of the T U P.
Okay, and then what would happen with with this $300,000? So it's being targeted for a project that is a little ways down in our budgeting. Would that 300,000 be held in reserve? What would happen with that money in between when it's paid and when we're ready to spend it?
Through the chair, the money is proposed to sit within the community amenity reserve until it needed to be spent.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Okay, thanks. I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions for myself. I wanted to echo something Counselor Peddengill pointed out. It's stated under the project information that flotel one, quote, flotel one has been moored at the W L N G site and occupied since June 21, 2024 in accordance with the B C E A O compliance order attachment three. That order required W L N G to to deploy the flotel one to site and to use the vessel for non-local workforce in accordance with the amendment to E, with the amended E A C, end quote. And in fact, just to reiterate, the order cited a non-compliance with their E A O issued permit. In that workforce personnel were housed elsewhere other than on the flotel, but did not specify that the flotel be deployed nor moored within the District of Squamish. So the flotel has been in non-compliance in our jurisdiction since June 21, 2024, which is over 380 days. And I just, I feel like this is a really important distinction that's been widely misrepresented as the E A O does not have the jurisdiction to usurp municipal jurisdiction. And we have had it confirmed in writing and verbally that the order was not meant to be interpreted as such. So a question for staff in this, in this T U P, we're suggesting this fine of $10,000 a day for a vessel that's been being in place for any period beyond their potential permit, i.e. if they are in non-compliance. Does the district have any intention of applying these fines retroactively to the flotel that has been there unpermitted? For, from the district's perspective, for now 381 days, which would be 3.81 million dollars in fines?
Through the chair, so shortly after W L N G withdrew their temporary use permit application back in June, they reached out to staff and indicated that they would, in fact, apply for a new temporary use permit application. So the district normally takes like a voluntary approach to enforcement. And so they demonstrated a willingness to apply for another permit. So at this time, there is no proposal to charge them a fee for the 100,000 or the $10,000 nightly fee.
The permit isn't, hasn't been issued. So this permit hasn't been approved or issued, that it cannot deal with a pre-existing non-compliance. And it is, the current flotel is not compliant with district bylaws when it comes to zoning. But we can't use a new application to retroactively, like we have to use different mechanisms to to reach compliance or to issue penalties than a temporary use permit.
Okay, thanks. And I was wondering if staff could comment on the advantages and disadvantages to the district in considering the two flotels under one T U P as opposed to two?
Through the chair, I would suppose advantage is resourcing. But also, this was the application that was submitted to staff, so this is what we have brought forward to council.
And do you suppose we're giving up any kind of a leverage or ability or enforcement ability by combining the two flotels under one T U P?
Through the chair, I would say that the enforcement ability is the same for either process.
Okay, thanks. And then just one more question. I was wondering if staff could comment on the value of that $300,000 as a C A C for, as a request for, for a request of this magnitude?
We can't really comment on on the value based on the request because it's not a community amenity contribution. It's not, our policy wouldn't apply to something like this. So we got, we don't really have any guidance on it.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll move on to, I have Mayor Hereford next on my list, then Mayor, Counselor Stoner and Counselor Peddengill.
Thank you. On the the conditions of permit. So section in the, in the draft permit is, so section B one, land use and development. Bullet point two, I find the language really, I'll say, interesting or challenging. It says, the temporary floating worker accommodation is permitted only on flotel one and flotel two. Where I think, I feel like the intent is that the temporary worker accommodation is permitted only in those places. Like the fact that it's floating or not floating, I don't understand that wording. Is it intentional in some way? It just feels awkward to me that if you're going to be in floating accommodation, it needs to be those accommodations. I don't think it's material whether it's floating or not. We're concerned about housing the workforce exclusively in these two locations is the proposal.
Yeah, through the chair, we can have a look at the wording there. I don't think that was intentional, so we can. I don't think that the word floating is important as well. That's not part of the use, so we can remove that from the draft permit.
I think that would make it, make, I, yeah, I've, it just feels awkward as it as it is. So if there's a way to to clean that up, I would say that removing floating makes sense, but perhaps there's another way. I'm curious about the, you said that there was, earlier I heard that there was in the deposit amount, which some concerns been raised around the table on that, that there was a a third party involved in arriving at that, at that amount. Is that something that can be, can we see more of of that? Or is that not something that's that's shareable?
It's, it's not really in a shareable form.
Okay. Thank you. I, I was trying to rationalize the, the concerns around the the deposit and what it's meant to cover to sort of like help us understand what's appropriate. I think it's natural to look at maybe the overall cost of executing a project and then take a percentage of that as a damage deposit. But like, what, what is it meant to cover? I guess I can turn that into a question. What is the damage deposit meant to cover? And is it the same as the daily amount? Like, is that sort of contributing towards the same sort of things?
The chair, in accordance with the Local Government Act, it's intended to guarantee the performance of the terms of the permit.
And what it normally is, so there's, there's two aspects to it. There's what is, what it's meant for, and then what can it be used for? So as a district, if we held, and this actually is a bit of, is an issue with a larger amount, is that if we held a large amount, we could only use it to go and do work on that site to remediate it. And there's an expectation with that, the larger amount you hold for a temporary use permit, the bigger the expectation that if something goes wrong, you will use it to remediate the site. Whereas I think in practical terms, given the ownership of that land and the other jurisdictions involved, it wouldn't be the law, the the local government that leads the kind of remediation of the site.
So you're saying in efforts to mitigate our, our risk, it's sort of intuitive that we would maybe increase a deposit amount, but that might actually be counterproductive to the risk to the organization because of the expectations that would come with that from a jurisdictional perspective?
That is correct.
Is, is the same thing true for the daily amount? And the reason I'm asking this is, there's a question earlier about two different permits. I see that this is what we've received, but I could see increasing that amount might be useful way to sort of strike a balance here, whether, and if it was two permits, it'd be the maximum on each. So, but just, are we, is it to cover the same things or is this a punitive piece for folks that are out, find themselves out of compliance of an issued permit, which is distinctly different from a deposit? I can try to rephrase it if I, if needed, but I can see the wheels turning there.
Through the chair, there is a difference between a daily amount, which is a charge, and the security deposit. So I would see the daily amount more as a penalty or fine versus the security deposit is something that you use to remediate with.
Thank you. I think, I'm not particularly interested in two, breaking this into two. I think, I'm not particularly interested in two, breaking this into two, into two permits. However, given that there's two vessels, perhaps there's a way that that daily amount could be increased to reflect that or to be tied to, one amount tied to each vessel might be a way to build comfort for I, what I think some folks are trying to build with the deposit amount. I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm just trying to problem solve here. Okay, that's good for me for now. Thank you.
Okay, it is now just a time check. It is three eighteen. Our allotted time was exhausted ten minutes ago. Council Stoner, you're up next, and then Council Pettingill, and then I'm gonna be looking for motions.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair. One of my questions is around just seeking clarity from staff. So there's two proposed recommendations. But I am curious what kind of feedback you're looking for today? Or if you're looking for specific direction on the draft TUP? Are you really just looking for the two motions that are presented and feedback that we would have on the draft TUP would be held until it came back to us at a future date?
So we, we do have two recommended motions for council. And so one is to receive the report for information. Because there's quite a bit of constraint around what the jurisdiction of a temporary use permit is. We, we will take council's feedback and we'll look into things before we come back. But the main thing is to confirm that we're gonna follow the standard process for a temporary use permit as outlined in legislation and not hold public hearings. So we need to, because we need to know that, getting ready for this. And secondly, staff, we're planning on bringing this application again for a committee meeting. It would be coming back to a council meeting to make a decision.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so my other question was around the amenity contribution that is proposed in the package. Can I just clarify and ensure that that has no implication on our ability to tax this project as we would typically tax any project? This is just something that they voluntarily contributed as part of this application and that's separate from our taxation, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. This is just a voluntary contribution and it would not have any impact on the taxation.
Okay, and then following on from that, they've requested that that get earmarked for a specific project, but we don't often do that with amenity contributions more broadly. And so is there an expectation? Are we setting ourselves up for an expectation to do that? Or would we follow our regular process and just put it within the general amenity pot?
Through the chair, the funds will be sitting in that general or the CAC, General Capital Reserve. So we'll have that money to spend when we need it on the splash pad at Branded Park.
And if I can add to that, if, if I could just add, this is a little bit different than our regular CAC, CAC contributions, which are voluntary, but they follow the policy in that the applicants don't direct the money towards a specific cause unless we reach agreement. Whereas this is operating outside the policy. But it's not unusual for us to receive essentially donations for a specific purpose. So I do think that the, there is an expectation on the applicant's behalf that this money will go towards the splash park.
Can you provide other examples of where we have directed something specifically to a project? When, as the most recent example, Ford came forward with two hundred and fifty thousand as part of their lay down yard TUP, and we just put that to general capital contributions. So can you speak to where we would have otherwise directed monies to a specific project?
I'll pass it to Ms. Wangyi.
Through the chair, I can't speak to other projects, but I can speak to the new processes that district has in place in regard to capital expenditures and the formation of the capital committee. And this proposed monetary amount was evaluated by the capital committee and deemed suitable to be placed in reserve for the splash park.
And if I could just add to that, we don't have any very recent examples where this has happened. But having, having had a, a site into previous community amenity contributions, I know that we used to have kind of strings attached where we would track payments from certain organizations to make sure that they were going to, you know, a specific amenity that they were intended for. So it's not a general practice that we normally do anymore, but it is something that we have done in the past.
Okay, I'll perhaps keep that as comments for the end, but that raises some concerns to me. My last question was, I appreciate the staff report says that there's no requirement for us to withhold our timing of considering this application till after the EAO decision or the Squamish Nation decision on the amendment. That being said, there isn't anything that requires us to consider this in advance of their decision-making timeline. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Pettingill.
Yeah.
A brief though.
Yeah, well, so I, I wonder if it's better to frame just as comments, because some things I expect there isn't an answer today. And maybe quicker just to identify the things that I would like answered, because I'm gonna advocate that this comes back to us with more information. So is that a more efficient way to handle this? Some comments? Okay, so, and I'll just say to my colleague, I understand that whether or not we care about noise from vessels and so on is a council debate. I guess what I'm grappling with is what the, the legal framework is that says we can or can't consider that. I still don't have that understanding. It is not clear to me which lines in the Local Government Act or which case precedent says we can or can't do this. And I, I don't, you know, from what it has been available, what I've been able to review, I, I don't actually agree with the staff assessment of these things. So I, I want to understand really what the law says a bit better, so I can make sure I'm appropriately considering the, the right things in my decisions. So I think it is a sort of a factual information piece that I'm, got for me. I would like to understand, you know, in the event, because this is purposely an isolative. It's been pitched as one of the benefits that it isolates people. But if they don't have citizenship or residency, they don't speak the language, and we have en masse people landing because there's an evacuation, and they have had no impact on, or sorry, no interaction in Squamish, no way to get help or understanding. I'm looking for what are the supports and services in that case? If this is a scenario, if, if, if everyone is sort of BC resident, English is the first language, this is maybe not an issue. But I want some understanding of the demographics to make sure in an emergency or other situation, we have the mechanisms to appropriately support the folks there. And so I haven't seen that addressed in safety plans or anything else. So for me, and whether or not then isolated flotel is appropriate, this is important consideration to understand. Going back to Ocean Watch, there's been long time discussions and advocacy around dealing with derelict and abandoned vessels. And what seems apparent to me is that the legal frameworks and jurisdictions and capacity of different levels of government to work together on sunken or abandoned vessels is abysmal. And so, and when you look at a vessel that sinks, maybe after an earthquake and a landslide and so on of this magnitude, it can be the hundreds of millions of dollars. So how we consider that hopefully unlikely eventuality in the damage deposit and sort of understanding that. And I would love to see, even if it's enclosed, council, the, the analysis of the, the deposit amount. I think I've had multiple requests for the dam analysis. And so I think that's important that that be shared with the public, and I want to see it if it has to be enclosed to understand what I'm seeing from the staff assessment versus what the BC assessment, BC Dam Safety Board says, this is an extreme consequence of failure, a high, or sorry, moderate probability of failure and a risk of caution. I want to understand how that lines up to our risk tolerance levels. And, and I don't have that understanding yet. Also note that we've had discussions in the past about whether this is permanent or temporary, and we should be evaluating it as such. The BC Dam Authority clearly puts this in terms of assessing risk and so on as permanent housing. And so I want to understand how we have comparably dealt with that in our assessments of risk and, and those sorts of things. Just looking. This speaks to some of this. Oh, so with the DPA two, so I understand that the technicality of DPA two doesn't apply, but we're being asked for something outside of our zoning and our DPAs and so on are meant to apply to things compliant with our zoning. So in my mind, if something is outside of our zoning, while we can't technically apply DPA two, we can and should, the way the, the OCP is written, take those principles from that policy and apply them adapted for the unique non-compliant nature of, of this project. So yes, we can't technically apply DPA two, but what's stopping us from taking the principles and applying those same principles of safety and risk management to our assessment of this? And I think those, that sort of leads to the things I'd be looking for more information on to then decide on conditions and so on that would be appropriate for me. And I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess we're moving on to comments. So comments from other councillors? Is there any? What? What? No? Two? Okay, Council Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much, staff, for bringing this. Thinking carefully about this and bringing it back to us. I'll use this to attempt to clearly articulate the changes I would hope to see in a temporary use permit that I could support. The first is the expiration date. I would expect to be twenty first of June, twenty twenty seven, as I don't think it's fair for an organization to have the possibility for a seven-year temporary use. The security deposit, I think that the, while I believe the two million dollars is low, particularly in the case where the, where remediation may need to take place. I accept staff's analysis of it. But would like to see this two million dollars per vessel and a ten thousand daily amount per vessel. I don't see this application as substantially different from TUP seventy-six. So I don't see a requirement for an additional public hearing on this matter. And regarding the CAC contribution, I believe quite strongly that that contribution should be allocated to the CAC reserve as opposed to one project specifically. And in my mind, this is generally to allow us the flexibility to complete projects as they come financially viable to us to complete. If we constantly allocated a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there and a little bit of money there to different projects, we still have to accumulate enough money to put all the, the whole project, to finish the whole project. And this is what the advantage of putting everything into the CAC reserve allows us. And so I think we should be allocating this money to the CAC reserve, not to one project specifically. I don't think that's part of the, explicitly part of the permit, but thanks.
Council Anderson.
Thank you. I'll first comment on the three hundred thousand dollar toward the splash park issue. I think that this is a project that is shovel-ready and an appropriate choice. I recall, as I'm one of the elementary school kids who picked rocks on the, on the centennial fields, I remember there, being there for the unveiling of the big rock with four names on it. BC Rail, Wildwood, McMillan, Budell, and Britannia Mines. And that's how we commemorated their contributions to that project. And so in addition to the project choice and the amount, I don't have a problem with having the Wood Fiber Energy acknowledged as a contributor to that project. It's shovel-ready. It's ready to go. More generally, I think that the flotel one and flotel two are practical solutions. I think we need to move on in an amiable and collaborative way to other business we have and will have with the WLNG project. Other issues to resolve, including opportunities. They are going to have needs, that project here in Squamish, because their site is quite limited in what it can host. And as the project evolves into operational modes, we're gonna have new questions come forward and issues to resolve with them. Also, other marine facilities and marine transport industries, together with them, we have a need to address safety and emergency preparedness on the, in Northern House Sound and on the Squamish waterfront, facility needs in future. So we have other conversations that we need to move on to. We may need WLNG advocacy help on certain issues facing the district as well. I could name a few. There is in the staff report, the comment under alternatives to recommendation, implications of alternative recommendation, that there is risk. There's risk in that an amended TUP can, amended TUP conditions may go beyond the district's jurisdiction. I think this is sound advice from staff. The Henrietta Lake Dam Risk Assessment, for example, that is not for the District of Squamish. The, we have, and it is pointed out in the staff report, that we would wish, prefer to avoid double jeopardy in environmental regulation. I think that we should keep in mind that we may need to also engage with other levels of government in an amiable and collaborative way and various issues arising from this project. And we want to be seen as a responsible, appropriately focused local government. So in summary, I'm happy to leave this TUP matter with staff as per the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Stoner. I have you next.
Thank you. Through the chair, I appreciate staff's work on this file. I think I've mentioned many of these elements, but I'll just try and summarize them here before a motion gets put on the floor in terms of things that I would like to see come back. So that is either public disclosure or the dam safety report and/or if that's not possible, some safe harmless agreement language in the TUP around the liability of the hazard. I hear my council colleague that this may be beyond our scope of jurisdiction. I would argue that our OCP language around hazard mitigation does provide us some responsibility in this area in terms of land use, planning and zoning. And a TUP is a matter of zoning. And so I, I just think it's important for us to cover ourselves going forward if we are gonna allow this to happen. Reconsideration of the security deposit amount, I'd agree with my council colleague, Hamilton, on that being a minimum of four million, so two million for each vessel. An expiration date of June twenty twenty seven feels most reasonable to me, given the length of the time that the vessel has already been sitting there. I too agree that the CAC contribution should be attributed broadly to the CAC reserve. Contrary to my council colleagues' comment that the splash park is shovel-ready, that is actually not true. It has been delayed at least until twenty twenty seven. And I think we would want to be able to use that money sooner rather than later for a benefit to our community, which we continue to get asked for in terms of what is this project actually providing to our community. And so I think working in partnership with this proponent to actually deliver something that is visible and viable in our community sooner rather than later, it shouldn't be earmarked to a specific project. And then finally, I would like my council colleagues to consider a direction to staff to bring this back following an EAO and a Squamish Nation Environmental Assessment Decision. We are, we are able to make our own decision in advance of that. But I would argue, why would we go through that process if it might just mean that we would have to amend the application or amend the TUP if the second flotel, for some reason, doesn't get approved by the province or by Squamish Nation? So I'm happy to let the lead agencies lead, as we've been told. This is not our direct area of jurisdiction, and so we can bring it back for consideration. And I'm happy to bring it back without a public hearing. I, I too agree that this is very similar to the pub, to the application that was made for temporary use permit number seventy-six. And so I think we've done our due diligence in terms of community public hearings on this particular file. And the narrowness of the project doesn't really, or the application, sorry, doesn't really allow for a functional public hearing from my perspective. And so I'm happy to bring this back without a public hearing, but I don't think we should do it before the other orders of government make their decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hereford.
Just as a, whatever, we haven't, we've been commenting, but there hasn't been a motion, so I'm gonna move the staff recommendation. And if it's seconded, I'll, I'll speak to it. You're seconding that. Thank you. The, I see the, I've been satisfied with a lot of the rationale for what we have before us here. And I think some of the, I'm trying to think of how we provide direction to, clear direction to our, our staff around this table. We've heard some, some comments. I don't want to engage with all of the comments that I've, that I've heard as far as what my opinion is on each particular one. So I, I think with the motion we have here, I'm open to amendments to, to be more explicit with timing and so on, which is always our, our process. However, at this point, the guidance is for it to come, for it to come back. And we've made comments. Now, whether they can all be accommodated or not before it comes back is, is a, a different matter. I just want to make sure we state that. Previously in my comments, I was interested in the daily amount per vessel. I hear, I'm not as concerned with the, the security deposit, the language in the, I think that this, for such specific things, that the language in the permit actually puts us in a strong position to collect any additional funds as we would need to, which that mechanism, I think, is actually quite similar to what we would need to accomplish to access the funds provided as a deposit. So there's a whole section around, around if the security deposit is, is inefficient to cover the amounts owing and so on. And that commitment there gives me some, some, some comfort, which is what it's, and I think it's, it's there to, to provide us that, that, well mitigate the risk, I guess, generally. I do think that a conversation around the, when TUP 76 was being, being discussed, the term of it, of the, of it was one of the pieces that we had debated as a, as a council. I do think that, that something shorter than the three years makes sense to me. Maybe it's two years from issuance and that doesn't get us the perfect score from when compliance, when things went out of compliance there, but might be a middle ground in this whole conversation around the three-year term. That likely, if, if this was a, something that was to move forward with the condition that other regulators need to provide their, their approval before issuance, then two years of issuance should cover off the, the, what I've heard on, from every channel that I can find around the construction timeline of this, of this, of this project. And then renewal would come back to council if, if needed. So that might be a path forward here that might aim to satisfy some of the concerns I've heard around the table. So I do think that daily amount piece, if it could be per vessel, which I've heard others say, I think that would be, might be another, another way forward here. But yeah, thank you. I'll leave the, my comments there for now.
Thanks, Counselor Peddyl.
Yeah, I may test a couple of amendments. The first is to amend the second bullet to direct staff to bring back responses to outstanding council questions for consideration to a committee of the whole.
I'll second.
You know, I have a bunch of things that I outlined are important for my decision and to understand the constraints of my decision. There's also things like the dam safety report and so on, which the public, I've heard over the last year, I've been asked for that report over and over again. And I think before we consider a permit and are able to speak to important conditions and so on, I, I think it's important that the, the public, not just me, have those answers and time to contemplate them. I went to the, the hosted open house, which was July 2nd, the day after Canada Day. Some of the leading advocates on this topic, I ran into them the day before. They weren't even aware. The ones who are paying attention even, weren't even aware this was happening. There was only a single board at this engagement, speaking to the no flotel. So the, the information was poor. What I'm hearing is, you know, we, we had incredible engagement and concern of this. I, I think the timing, and we've complained to the EAO over and over again about the duration of time for feedback, the timing. I found myself up late last night going through these reports, trying to understand where we are. And so I think we need some time to get these answers and to have the time to digest. And so that's why this is asking for this to come back, to give the public time to understand the information, not just me. So.
Okay, well, should we have a vote on the amendment? All in favor? Oh, that's Counselor Peddyl and Counselor Greenlaw, motion fails. What's that? Oh, yeah. Any opposed? Counselor Hamilton, French, Anderson, Stoner, and Mayor Herford. Counselor Peddyl.
Okay, I'll try a second, that staff bring forward TUP number 80 for consideration after the conclusion of the, the EAO and Squamish Nation processes. And I will speak to that if seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things here. I think like my colleague said initially, I don't think it makes sense to put a bunch of staff time and focus. We know we're overwhelmed until we understand that this can actually move forward as proposed. The other issue of concern for me is concurrently, there is an EAO process for feedback, which starts on the 12th and ends August 4th. And so we have a very limited window to provide feedback to that. And, and, and so I think it's important that, because that allows us to provide feedback on some of the issues we're told we're not allowed to consider for this process. And I think there are really important issues around housing more broadly and, and, and other things that are relevant that we should provide feedback for. And I think our focus needs to be possibly on that, but at least give us the room and the option to do that and then deal with this TUP, which is under less of a time constraint afterwards.
Thanks for that. Mayor Herford?
Thank you. I just have a question, question of clarity. Do, and I hope staff can, do we have an understanding of what the projected timeline is for those, those processes? I was trying to understand impacts of this, of what we're considering here.
Through the chair, the BCEAO plans to make a decision in early November. And we have a meeting with Squamish Nation later this week to have a discussion with them. But I don't know their timeline, but early November for the BCEAO.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Stoner. I should have gone to you first as a secondor. Please go ahead.
No, that's all good. I appreciate my counsel colleague for bringing this amendment forward. I, I think it's an interesting one and, and one that I will be supportive of. I like go back and forth. Part of me is like, we're trying to get the existing flotel into compliance. One of my biggest challenges is that there is a flotel sitting out there that is out of compliance. And this application aims to do that. It also goes beyond what is currently allowed in the EAO. And I appreciate staff's response that we do have some latitude to do that. But it also makes me wonder why we would. Again, if we're just trying to bring one flotel into compliance, that's different than if we end up with two out there. And so I will support this in the end. As I think it through, I rather just, as I said in my previous comments, let the lead organizations lead on this and then consider the application once that decision has been made, so we know what we're actually dealing with at the end of the day.
Thanks, Mayor Herford.
Thank you. I think that there's a couple of pieces here that I think we're in danger of conflating. One is, would we support this with the, the conditions proposed? And I think that there may be a way to advance our work. And if we reach a decision that, that, say of approval, that hinges on with the condition that the EA and the nation, other regulators support, perhaps there's a way to strike a balance here where we can communicate sort of that without prejudice. You know, this is pending on your, on your, your approval rather than an endorsement of this is a preferred path. I understand that council's concern, I'm, I'm hearing council's concern as that we're, it will be seen as a, you know, as a desired outcome versus a, this has been through our, a process and unbalance is something that can proceed. So I, I don't know, I'm concerned about delaying our, about delaying our, our process. Right now, we're in charge of the timeline of this, of this process, which is what we're debating right now. However, if this starts hinging on someone else's timeline, we know that these things do just drop from the sky and our ability to get this onto our agenda and deal with it in a timely manner in the midst of a budget process and all the, and all the rest. I'm, I'm concerned that we lose control of the timeline. Here, we're giving away control of the timeline of scheduling our process and doing, and doing our work. And I think there's, there may be a better way to address the concerns of council with this sort of getting ahead of, of process. But I think these things can move together. And if this is something that isn't going to be supported, that can be not supported at the next touch point, if that's what council desires. So I, I would like to be in charge of that timeline. So I think there's another way to address this. So I won't be supporting this motion.
I'm just going to give myself an opportunity to speak. I really like the way that Counselor Stoner put this. Let's let the lead organizations lead on this. So I'll be speaking in support of the motion. Counselor Peddyl.
Yeah, and just for my colleague, I don't think anyone mentioned concern about this setting a precedent or sending a signal of our direction on this. I, I, I think now that you mention it, it would be a concern, but it is more, this is not where I see us spending our very limited resources. I, I think, you know, we let those chips fall where they may, and then we can put our resources into dealing with this if we need to. I don't want to proactively do that, given everything on our plate right now. And that is my primary reason for asking for this to wait until we have an understanding of, of where the EAO is ending up.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. If this was, if it wasn't for Flotel One already sitting there, not in compliance, this would be a much easier decision for me. But considering Flotel One is sitting out of compliance with our zoning regulations, and this is a, this is a temporary use permit for both Flotel One and Flotel Two, it, it makes this question of when we consider this somewhat challenging. I think that our pre-release condition, condition 1A, all permits, approvals, licenses, certificates, or other similar authorizations have been obtained from any body with jurisdiction to regulate the permitted temporary use, really covers us. In order for this issue to actually be issued, all of those need to be, all of the EAO decisions need to have been completed. So I think we are covered, and so I won't be supporting the motion on the floor.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the amendment? Oh, Counselor Stoner.
Just seeking a point of clarity, and staff can say that they are not able to weigh in on this at this point. But given that language that was just read out in the first condition, so it's an application for two flotels, one of which has the, so has the approvals from the other orders of government and regulators. So would we issue this directly to Flotel One and then wait for the decision on Flotel Two? Like, how does that actually apply? And I appreciate that there's a motion on the floor. So you can say that you don't want to answer that at this time. But my brain is having a hard time figuring out what that looks like.
Through the chair, the condition, how it's worded, is that the TUP would not be released. It's one TUP application, so it wouldn't be a release until all the approvals are in place for Flotel Two. So it doesn't bring Flotel One into compliance any sooner. They would have, through the chair, they would have authorization from council, but they wouldn't have an approved TUP. That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Peddyl.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that there is no benefit to us in having this in compliance. It, it gives us actually more ownership and responsibility for something we have now permitted. Right now, all the risk and liability and problem and sort of looking bad is on the proponent because they have proceeded without getting those approvals. So there is no benefit to us to accelerate this. And I don't think it makes sense to put our resources into accelerating this until we know we really need to.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment. We have Counselor Peddyl, Counselor Stoner, and Counselor Greenlaw. And those opposed, Counselor French, Anderson, Hamilton, and Mayor Herford, motion fails. Yes, Counselor Peddyl?
So on the main motion for now, then I will make my comments. I think for me, yeah, I'm sort of disappointed. But hopefully we can get some of these other things addressed. And maybe I can find a way to, to support something here. I want to better understand where we are relying on Squamish Nation as a regulator. And if we can actually do that, my understanding of digging into things is that Squamish Nation is not a, as I understand it, a legal regulator, and maybe I'm incorrect there. And so I want to understand where we are relying on that sort of official status. Because my understanding is their place comes from commercial contracts, and that gives them an ability to weigh in. But looking at the Economic Benefits Agreement with the province, there's actually very significant restrictions on their ability. And so I, I just want to understand where we are there. For me, I would like to see a duration of a couple of months on the first permit if one goes through. We have seen multiple things like with this, we were, they were asked directly if they needed a, a larger workforce. We heard over and over from many other experts that they needed double. And they said, no, 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 no. And then not too soon after, they want to double it, just like everyone said. And, and so I, I don't have a lot of confidence and, and, you know, in, in this doubling and that everything will work as said. So I want, I want that chance to, to have a TUP that we can choose not to review. And I want that, that accountability mechanism in place and to have a much shorter timeframe. I'm not inclined for an open town hall type evening, but I think more engagement, more time for engagement and public input for some of the information we've asked for is appropriate. Again, I, I think the engagement done so far and the timing was poor and contrary to the feedback we've given the EAO over and over again. I think there needs to be conditions reinforcing, or I support the conditions about no waste in Squamish. The submitted waste management report is out of date and inaccurate. It talks about using Site B and things, which I understand aren't permitted. And so if we are going to start contemplating accepting waste and so on, I would need to see an updated waste management report to, to know what all that meant. For me, the CAC number in my head is around 200 to 300 million dollars. And my justification for that is they were told over and over again, we don't have the housing since 2014. And we are now seeing them spend by their numbers, 200 to 300 million dollars on temporary housing that does not stay in our community, does not address our housing problem. At the same time, they and their dependent, interdependent projects like Fortis are exacerbating our, our housing crisis. And I don't think it makes any sense to allow businesses to come into town, have these negative impacts, and, and bypass the actual process we have, which they could have or could choose to adjust their timelines. And I understand they wouldn't want to, but they absolutely can build housing that has a lasting impact that is less than what they're spending on these temporary things. And I don't want to reward them for bypassing what our community actually needs. And so, you know, I, I think they're still getting a whole lot of benefit in having these temporary units and, and moving ahead and paying the 200 to 300 million dollars or whatever it would be in the CAC. But that is the order of magnitude. And people can say, well, temporary housing is allowed in other places. All across B.C., we have a massive housing crisis. And we're allowing these big projects to go and use temporary housing and not build permanent housing. So how do we address this if we keep allowing them to do this? It, it is completely unreasonable. So never mind all the climate change stuff, like just basic housing. They need to come to the table in terms of supporting public housing in a way they haven't. And, and I think it is really important to look at making sure we can recover and deal with a sunken vessel recovery. Because again, that ocean wash comes up and up and again, we don't have the legal frameworks to deal with this. And so, you know, CACs need to be much more substantial or the penalties or whatever we're calling it. Sorry, not the CAC, but the damage deposit to deal with these eventualities is important.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking in support of this motion, the staff recommendation. And in speaking in support, I'm going to just share a word that I heard today that has really caught my ear. The word is reasonable. The word is reasonable, and it was used by our staff. And one of the reasons that the word reasonable was used is because the level of due diligence that's being done. And some of the due diligence that I've learned about today has been a bit surprising. It's clear to me that our staff has done some deep digging to get us to where we are today. Reasonable. Contrast that with some of the unreasonable things I've heard at this end of the table. That's why I support the staff recommendation.
All right. Well, I'm going to venture some comments of my own. I'm in support of Counselor Hamilton's suggestion to, of June 21st, 2027 as the expiration date or shorter. I'm not in favor of the three-year permit timing, as Counselor Pettingill mentioned, basically to force as much accountability as possible. I also support no waste in Squamish. I want to talk about the deposit. Again, this is my industry that we're coming from, or the sister industry of my industry. $2 million deposits for two boats, when we nearly settled on $10 million for one boat, is just not acceptable. We're somehow down to double the risk and one-fifth of the deposit. $2 million for reference is the same deposit that a remote mineral exploration camp of 50 people would command, not two vessels with 1,300 people in a UNESCO World Heritage Site that is also a deep fjord. I wrote a request that the deposit is increased to at least $50 million for the two vessels. And my rationale is this. One, our goal is to guarantee the performance of the terms of the permit. And this is an industry that has a legacy of abandoning assets, in particular when there is a bust in their economy, which is predicted in the near future for the LNG industry. The deposit held by this district should reflect the cost of removing a vessel, especially given the ongoing, especially given the ongoing concerns and how sound about derelict vessels that Counselor Pettingill alluded to. So I looked up the cost of how much it is to recover a cruise ship and found the Costa Concordia, which ran aground in Italy about 10 years ago, and cost in excess of $1.2 billion to recover. And that's my concern. Again, this is my sister industry, and this, and there is a legacy of abandoning assets. And I think it's important that we protect our municipality from those costs because it is just an absolute quagmire to get vessels removed, derelict vessels removed. Furthermore, I think this application merits more mulling over by the public. I don't think this needs to be a public hearing. I haven't heard an appetite for that. And I appreciate that the proponent met the threshold for informing the public, albeit those thresholds are quite scant. But I have spoken to several informed members of the public who are unaware of this application, and I believe we need more time for the public to give feedback. I suspect part of the problem is that the engagement was held once again in an inopportune time, this time at the beginning of a summer break directly adjacent to a holiday. I would also like to have the Henriette Dam Hazard Assessment made public, or at least have an opportunity to discuss it as a council, and would like to have further assurances that not only are these workers safe, but also that the district is not assuming liability, given the province's 2023 assessment of the dam, and given the rise of extreme weather events like atmospheric rivers, forest fires, and heat domes, all which serve to quicken the erosion of structures, soils, and bedrock. With the proposal of over 1,200 people now directly at the mouth of the outflow, should there be an incident, it's incumbent upon us around this table to consider the safety of the people who would be impacted by the, by our decisions, and also to protect the district from liability of an accident of that magnitude. And I would really like clarity on the liability of the exposure. And I think all of this is perfectly reasonable, for the record. I'm also not in favor, not in favor, of the prescriptive nature of this $300,000 going to a very small portion of the splash pad, and definitely not in favor of Wood Fiber putting their name on it. Okay. Are we ready to vote on some things? Should we move the first motion here? Who moved it? Mayor Hereford moved it. Counselor French seconded the first motion, which is received to, to receive the report.
I moved both together.
Oh. Should we split them? Okay. Okay. All in favor of the two motions. Okay. We have Mayor French, Anderson, or, Mayor French, Counselor French, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hamilton, Counselor Stoner, and Mayor Hereford in support. And all opposed, Counselor Greenlaw and Pettingill opposed. Well, thanks for that. Well, I'll see you soon for another super invigorating, fun conversation about that. And yeah, shall we give ourselves 10 minutes to emotionally recover? Thanks. See you back here at 4:12. Counselor Stoner.
To convene a session. We're going to suspend the order of the agenda and cover our, the next topic we're going to cover is 6-1, the Squamish Arts Annual Report Presentation, which will be brought by Ms. Young and Mr. Deo. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pleased to welcome Clea Young, the Executive Director of Squamish Arts Council. Clea is here to share highlights from the past year and provide an update on their work enriching community life through arts and culture in Squamish. The presentation reflects an ongoing commitment to supporting local artists, community events, and programming, public art, and creative partnerships throughout the district. Over to you, Clea.
Thank you for that introduction, Jay, and thank you for the opportunity, Council, to speak with you about Squamish Arts' programming in 2024, which feels a little distant right now, but I will recall it as best I can. My name is Clea Young. I'm the Executive Director at Squamish Arts. I joined the organization in March of last year. Just to give you an idea of what we're working through today, I'll just ground us in our mission and vision, and then work through our three agreements that we have with the district. The partnership agreement, public art agreement, and the Arts and Culture Community Enhancement Grant Agreement. Just rooting us first in Squamish Arts' mission and vision. Our mission is to raise awareness of and improve access to arts and culture in Squamish while supporting local artists. And our vision is where arts and community are embedded, sorry, arts and culture embedded, are embedded into the fabric of Squamish's community and considered a vital component of its identity. I won't ramble off the mandate. It's on our website. And just to let you know a bit more about who we are, we are, we have a board of, a volunteer board of directors, community members, many of whom you will recognize. Not all of them are here photographically, but you can see the list there. And we are a staff of two, myself and Aisha, Darian, and Annie, our Programs and Communications Manager. So starting off with our partnership agreement with the district, which encompasses much of our yearly program, yearly programming. This, the tenants under our partnership agreement are the community, our community leadership, our youth and emerging artists programming, and our public programs, Squamish Arts Festival, Art Walk, our community galleries program, and Art School. Starting first, jumping into our community leadership role. In 2024, we released, in the spring of last year, the Future Needs Study was released to the public after several years of gathering information and working on that report. And while many options were outlined, short, mid, and long-term, for cultural facilities in Squamish, the means for funding those options was not as expensive. So Squamish Arts continues to explore options for a permanent home, suitable for its own off-season programming, meeting, and office space, and usable for a range of community groups. The development of this study aligns with the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategies Actions 5 and 6, which are concerned with optimizing existing space and supporting the future direction or redevelopment of cultural facilities. There's still a lot of work to do to follow up on the report, such as exploring external funding opportunities to develop, to develop new cultural spaces. And recently, Squamish Arts' Board has formed a committee to continue this work. More of our community work involves supporting the community through sharing our event assets with other community groups, our P.A. system, our tents, tables, and A-frames that we offer for free at a, or at a low cost. And the funds from that go toward repairing the equipment or purchasing new equipment. And you can see a list there of some of the organizations that have benefited from using our event assets in 2024. And you can see a list there of some of the organizations that have benefited from using our event assets in 2024. We also extensively promote community arts events via our social media outreach and our bi-weekly newsletter to member and our community events calendar. And this initiative aligns with the Arts and Culture Heritage Strategies Action Three with regard to fostering collaboration and connection in the community by supporting the efforts of other community groups, groups to mobilize, strategize, and engage. Jumping into our youth programs, starting first with Amped in the Park, which is now well underway for 2025. In 2024, it was a successful season, our eighth since its inception in 2017, averaging about 200 people per event. Amped in the Park features emerging and youth performers. And in 2024, 25, youth, youth took the stage to share their talent. Industry professionals on the Amped team continue to mentor youth interested in learning, stage, and sound management on a professional system. Our youth programs align with Action One, tactic 1.3 of the Arts and Culture Heritage Strategy concerned with nurturing the development of programs and events that aim to engage youth in arts and cult, arts and culture experiences. We also maintain a scholarship program for youth graduating from How Sound Secondary and pursuing post-secondary arts education. Another program that falls under our partnership agreement with the district is the Squamish Arts Festival, soon to be happening for 2025. In 20, oops, sorry, I'm just going to go back. So here are a few stats on the 2024 festival. We were able to raise close to $168,000 of funding to produce Squamish Arts Festival, which comprises two full festival days, one in Junction Park and one at the Oceanfront. And then in the intervening weeks between those two festival dates, we put on arts workshops, various venues around town, and collaborating with different arts groups. So that is Squamish Arts Festival. And you can see there that we had many partners and many artists, 145 combined artists, artisans, and heritage performers over those two weeks. And many community members were able, able to participate as volunteers, 42 of them. Here's a little more about the engagement at Squamish Arts Festival in 2024. And our festival ties directly into Action One, tactic 1.1 of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy in that the annual festival helps to establish an eventful community with plenty of opportunities to participate. The festival also aligns with Action Four in that it aims to promote the unique artistic identity of Squamish to the community and visitors alike. Art Walk is another one of our programs within the partnership agreement. And last year, it happened in July for 2025. We will be moving it to October, just in terms of capacity for our staff and as well as, we just found that offering the studio tours and that sort of thing, there are fewer people in town going around to those sorts of things. So Art Walk comprised 23 venues featuring local artists. 111 artists were participating, 16 studio tours of artist studios around Squamish were, were available, and 31 art activations during Art Walk. It's a very good example of Arts and Culture Heritage Strategy Action Three, tactic 3.4, which concerns creating connections with businesses to support space for exhibitions and programming in that we connect artists with local businesses placed to show their work. And lastly, Art School is one of our newest programs. And this program is largely taking place out of the 55 Activity Center and typically in the off-season, when I say off-season, off-summer season, because we can offer these programs indoors in the winter. So these are art classes taught by local talent within Squamish. And we are always looking for new instructors and new offerings. And this program aligns with Action One, tactic 1.1 in its effort to support establishing an eventful community that offers arts opportunities to participate in year-round. In summation of our partnership agreement, Squamish Arts leveraged the district's contribution of $60,524 to raise almost an additional $300,000 in grant funding and sponsorship and revenue. You can see the breakdown there, the bottom. So that wraps up the partnership agreement. I'll jump into public art now. 2024 was largely focused on conservation efforts of existing public art around Squamish. Sabina Sutherland, an art conservator, undertook refurbishing many works in Squamish. And the logbooks, for example, the Rainbow Mosaic in Stan Clark Park, the Christina Nick Salmon sculptures around town as well. We also embarked on a mural rejuvenation of the Aaron Nelson Moody mural in Junction Park. And that was spearheaded by Alex Folks, and he was supported by students from the Stopma School. Our Public Art Camp took place last summer in the Squamish Skate Park, where we painted the Bull Giant Watermelon. And this year, we're offering two camps, and one is underway this week, a spray paint, spray paints focused art camp is happening today for kids. But there are many things we have lined up for them, so it's okay. So this year, we're offering the Spray Paint Camp as well as another floor mural camp led by Alex Folks. And lastly, on the public art front, in 2024, the Squamish Public Art Website was launched. And as part of the process of building the website, the all-district-owned works of art were identified, assessed by a conservator ranked in conservation priority, and are undergoing maintenance on a schedule moving forward. This ensures that the district investment in public art is well-cared-for in the future. And currently, the website is being updated to include the new works of public art at Oceanfront Squamish and the latest from Mural Walk Festival. Community Galleries is another focus of ours, maintaining two community galleries in town, the Artisan Gallery and the Medical Building. And we, this is entirely volunteer-run by some fabulous keen volunteers who mount rotating exhibitions by local artists in these two spaces. And our last agreement here with the district, our Arts and Culture Grants Agreement. In 2024, 13 grants were awarded, receiving between them $56,500 for a different, to artists and community groups. One impact example is the Seeta Sky Dance Collective, who received $8,000 and then in turn used that money to raise an additional close to $52,000. With that money, they were able to donate $8,000 back to another arts group. So it's a very, that's a very full-circle example. And you can see a list here of the many deserving groups that received funding through this granting program. Rockendale Art Gallery, Check Miss Foundation, Seeta Sky Dance Collective, Create Maker Space, and many, many more. Just to kind of highlight the impact of the final reports, we've received 12 of the 13 for 2024. And that 51,000 that's been reported, we see that an additional close to 110,000 was raised by those groups and 50,000 in in-kind support. So the total return on investment of that 51,000 is 208%, which is pretty phenomenal. And lastly, what's happening in 2025? Right now, we have two mural camps underway this summer. Squamish Arts Festival will be taking place over three weeks rather than two weeks, which enables us to offer more arts workshops in the intervening time between our two festival dates. I mentioned that Art Walk is moving from July to October. And that's in consultation, after some consultation with artists as well in the community who agreed that would be a wise choice. We're continuing to work on behalf of Arts, Culture, and Heritage Groups on facilities planning. And we are currently in the final year of our strategic plan and looking toward our next phase for the organization. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I look forward to your update every year. It's just, it's just so great to see what you're doing out in community and your return on investment is, is quite impressive. It's just such value-added for our community. So thanks for all the hard work you do. Council, do you have any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Ms. Young, not too long ago, we considered a report regarding the Oceanfront and some space that's been dedicated to your organization's use in future. I wonder if you could just say a few words about your plans or planning that has been done for, for that space as it unfolds. It'll probably be a few years before we see the bricks and mortar in place. But what, what are your plans for that space?
Well, I mean, it's really more of an expression of interest, I believe, at this point. And I would like to keep all doors open for space for arts and culture in our community. And, you know, with regard to the Future Needs Study, a lot of discussion in there was about having different cultural hubs within Squamish. And I can see that that being a very populated area and a place where events will be happening. It'd be great to have a space where we can offer other groups to, depending on, on the footprint and how it's laid out and what will be possible there. But I think it'll be a wonderful place to offer workshops, talks, events, maybe an office space, meeting space for arts groups, rehearsal space, any, any kind of space we can activate for the arts, I think is a, is a good thing.
To follow up on the same theme, really, I noted down, just from your slide, continued work on behalf of Arts, Cultural Heritage Groups and Facilities Planning. And I wrote down exhibit space. We don't have any Squamish. And it's really a pressing problem. And it's not only for visual arts, but for heritage as well. And there's just nowhere to, and nowhere also to, to host traveling exhibits. We have a couple traveling the province on First Nations language recovery. And they are sponsored by the Royal BC Museum, they're traveling around the province. We don't have anywhere to host something like that. We, and it has to be a space with specific standards and for insurance purposes and this sort of thing. And in fact, I know of a group that's just thinking, well, I guess we'll have to go to Britannia Mine and ask them if they have one of their shops available, because they're putting a lot of work into a heritage exhibit, but there's just nowhere to put it up. Maybe that's more of a comment, but I trust that that effort, it does consider exhibit space. Have that firmly in, in mind, because it really is a gap for a town of our size. Finally, if I may, I have had a couple of opportunities to engage with Sabina Sutherland, the arts conservator that has been working with you. And she's so impressive with her experience and also with the way she delivers advice. Is, have you had Sabina Sutherland produce any report capturing all the advice that she can offer for future use in our arts, our public art planning and, and maintenance? Has she been expected or delivered any, so that we can capture all of, all of her good advice in the way of a report?
Sorry. I feel like that was part of the initial scope of work that started before my time. And I, I wonder if that information is now with someone at the district, but I'm not sure. I'll have to look for you.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit more to that as well. She has produced some draft work in terms of public art, like asset management plan priorities. So it's something that is an ongoing process. There's no formal report yet, but she's doing some fantastic work to help us understand what our needs are and how to manage our assets.
Thank you, thank you, Trip.
Thanks. Next, I have Mayor Herford.
Thank you very much for coming to present to us today and for all the work throughout the, the year. I try to get out to as many of them as I can, but I can't keep up, which is, which is great. I, my question is around the, the granting program. And it's, it's a minor thing. I'm really happy with how impactful it is. But I'm trying to understand when, often when I'm attending an event, I don't necessarily, I can't distinguish between the ones that the decisions around this table funded and the ones that were funded through other initiatives. And I just wonder how we close the loop on that. I, I think that having, you know, Squamish Arts branding on everything you touch makes absolute sense, and I'm fully in favor of that. But how do we, is there something that we can do or is there something in the agreement to have the, the district's contribution, the taxpayers' contribution locally recognized in, in those events? I know you have third parties doing promotional materials and signage and so on, but like, how do we? I feel like we should close the, we would all benefit from closing the loop on that. As a, as someone that's quite aware of the mechanisms, I haven't been able to distinguish that as far as the impacts of, of my part in decisions at this table. So is this something that you've, you've seen or have any thoughts on?
Thank you for your question. So for example, just so I can clarify, if you were at an event that is, that falls under one of the programs that received funding, you're not recognizing that it's been awarded that money through Squamish Arts and the district. You're not seeing that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it's not immediately evident to me, but maybe I'm not at the ones that we have funded. So I don't really know how to correlate those two. So are there things in those granting programs that, that aim to sort of highlight that this is a beneficiary of that program?
We do share our logo and the district's logo with the organizations that have received funding and ask that they, it's sort of a requirement that they put that in there, as you mentioned, third-party marketing materials. But I guess we could be more kind of stringent on reviewing those before, beforehand. I guess another thing that other granting organizations do is have a verbal kind of thanks that's in the opening for an event, that kind of thing. It's difficult if it's an exhibition or that kind of thing, but.
Yeah, and, and maybe this isn't a, maybe I haven't been at one that has, has been that. But perhaps there's a, a, like one logo that represents that co, for that granting program might be a way to, to address that. Because I, I'm not entirely certain and, and I would like to be, so I can feel that, that impact of the decisions around, around the table. And I guess the politician in me, which is, would like the community to see that that, you know, there's that benefit around the table and have that highlighted. So some, but again, maybe that's happening and I'm at the wrong spot. So I'm still, I don't really know how to score that. So I'm happy to hear that it's part of the, the process, so.
But maybe we can revisit it and see, see how it's, yeah, if it's making it all the way through, yeah.
Great, thank you. And I'll, I'll let you go through your slide deck and pick me out of the crowd in retrospect. I saw myself there, which was great, yeah. So, thank you.
I didn't.
Thanks for that, Counselor Fettengel.
Yeah, thanks, and thank you for all the, the work. I've got to work closely with you on a number of things, so it's, it's been fantastic. I just, looking for some reflections here, but my recollection is when we saw the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy, you know, the, the public relative supporter appetite for events and some of the more arts-focused things still fell behind. Some of the sports activities and, you know, as a counselor, tend to hear more about hockey rink than some of the things around arts infrastructure still. When I look at the growth of things like the How Sound Music Festival, like the growth there is disproportionately large to community growth. And so, and, you know, having been on the Arts Council Board previously, the explosion in arts and arts appetite, I'm not seeing sort of that matched in surveys and public sort of requests for infrastructure and so on. So I guess a little bit of a reflection or analysis, if you can, about, is this a case of people really just are less interested in us municipally spending on that? They assume it's always there and they don't understand the connection? Or, you know, this is a focus area for the Arts Council to, to build that? Or is, you know, is it just like the, the hockey folks are really organized and loud and structured and, or like, what's going on there? Do we know?
I don't. I mean, I'm newish to the community and I've sort of been kind of getting to know everyone and how everything works. Yeah, maybe our lobbying is not as loud as it could be for, for those things, but. Yeah, I'm not sure, Chris, just to be. yeah, I'm not sure, Chris, to, to be honest. We could definitely be doing some more surveying of the community because it is growing, as you say, and there are new voices and needs here that maybe we haven't tapped into. Yeah. Not sure.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Okay, well, we're looking for a motion to receive, so I'll move by Mayor Herford, seconded by Counselor French. All in favor? Do you want comments? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I felt I had to respond to Counselor Pedengal's topic raised, which I think is very important. The Library Board has recently spent some time looking at the outcome of the community surveys. And we make the same observation that Counselor Pedengal has. However, if we look more closely between recreation facilities and cultural facilities, they actually have the same percentage of support for they are important. The difference is, is that there's more people register or voting for recreation facilities as very important. And that may be reflect the fact that they're topical. The extra, the pool closure that we experienced, the ice sheet, those people are always mobilized to, to cast their vote. So we should take comfort in the fact that, in fact, it's the, the level of support seeing cultural facilities as important is the same as recreation. The other observation that we can make is that this is very typical. If we look at other communities and a number of communities are doing such surveys in connection with the amenity cost charges by law and the preparation for that, and we're seeing the same pattern of less support, less buy-in for cultural facilities. It's just simply probably the way life is for the cultural sector. It's not unique to Squamish. Just wanted to pass on those comments and maybe also just applaud the way that you have referred throughout your presentation to the recommendations, the tactics, if you like, of the Arts Cultural Heritage Strategy. And that helps to keep that strategy document fresh for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Mayor Herford?
I'd just like to thank, again, reiterate my, my thanks for all the work throughout the, throughout the year. It's, and my comments around that, that clarity isn't, is really, I think speaks to the success that you're doing because it is something quite, you know, minor and around the, around the edges. So thank you so much for the, for the work. And it's very impressive and has had a very meaningful impact on, on the community as we're growing, continue to grow quickly. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll reiterate that thank you as well, once again. It's just so, it's, culture is such a vital part of community. So it's really arts and culture. So it's really nice to see that invigorated by you fine folks. So all in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next subject. Give staff a couple of minutes to get reoriented. We're going to be discussing the District of Squamish, Squamish Zoning Bylaw Number 2200, 2011 Amendment Bylaw, Six Units Near A Frequent Bus Route, Number 31702025, presented by Ms. Philp and Ms. Fletcher. Thanks. Give you a minute to get settled.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. All right. Should I go?
Take it away.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Committee of the Whole. Asia Philp Planer here with Jessie Fletcher, Manager of Community Development. And today we're presenting a proposed zoning amendment by law to allow for six dwellings near the future frequent bus route. So staff's objective for today is to get the committee's feedback on the proposed amendment to allow for development of up to six dwelling units per lot along the district's future frequent bus route. There's an example of a six, of six units shown here. This is taken from CMHC's Housing Design Catalog. And it shows four units fronting the street in the left-hand rendering and two units located at the rear of the property in the right-hand rendering. So the proposal for six units along the district's future frequent bus route is one of the actions that was included in the district's housing action plan and is also a CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund commitment that was included in the district's successful half grant application. Pursuing as a right zoning for six units along the frequent, future frequent bus route builds on the recent R1 zoning changes that were adopted last year to increase missing middle housing opportunities in our existing neighborhoods. The proposal is also aligned with the province's Bill 44 Small-Scale Multi-Unit Housing Legislation that requires qualifying municipalities to amend their zoning bylaws to allow for six-unit housing developments along their frequent transit networks. So I'll touch briefly on the district's future frequent bus route. It's been included in the latest three-year Transit Expansion MOU between the district and B C Transit. The initial route is planned to start up in January 2026 and is proposed to run between downtown and Garibaldi Village and it'll pass through the Dentville North Yards and Garibaldi Estates neighborhoods. Staff are proposing to extend the six-unit zoning to include properties that also fall within 400 meters of the future planned extension of the route, which goes up to the Garibaldi Highlands and Capilano University. So the full planned frequent bus route is shown here in the thick purple line. So the proposed zoning, there's two zoning approaches. First is the R6 Zone, and this would be applied to properties that are currently zoned R1 that are located within 400-meter walking distance of the future frequent transit network bus route and outside of high flood hazard areas. The R6 Zone closely mirrors the R1 Zone, and the only difference is that up to six strata titled units would be permitted on a lot in the R6 Zone compared to four strata titled units in the R1 Zone. The second zone that we're proposing is the R4 Zone. And we're proposing just to update that zone to allow for up to six strata titled units on a lot. Currently, four are permitted with the option of adding a fifth dwelling unit if it's a secondary suite or an accessory dwelling unit. All the properties currently zoned R4 are located within 400 meters walking distance of the future frequent transit network alignment. So we're just proposing to update the R4 density section to increase it up to six units. I'll just say a quick note that I do have the detailed neighborhood maps of the proposed six-unit rezonings, if the committee wants to review these during question period. So moving on to proposed engagement, staff are employing an inform, inform level on the IAP2 spectrum. A project cage has already been posted to the Let's Talk Squamish Engagement Platform. And staff are planning to hold a public open house event following this Committee of the Whole meeting and prior to bringing the bylaw amendments to council for consideration of readings. And with that, the rec staff recommendation is to, that the committee direct staff to incorporate your feedback on the zoning amendment by law number 3170. I'll pass it back to the Chair for questions and comments.
Thanks for that. Counsel, questions? Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. Starting in Dentville, can you remind me why was Dentville R4 instead of R1? Yeah.
Through the Chair, Dentville has secondary floodways that are running through the major roads going through Dentville. And in order to meet the recommendations of our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, we are doing larger setbacks in the Dentville neighborhood than what are in the R1 Zone. So we created the special R4 Zone to apply, to reflect that we need to maintain a larger setback from those secondary floodways.
Okay, so what distinguishes the flood hazards in Dentville, the R4, from flood hazards elsewhere in our community? The ones, I think, R2 and R3, if I recall correctly, are also due to flood hazards. So what's the distinction there that we could pick R4?
Yep. So through the Chair, there's levels varying degrees of flood hazard in our community. In Brackendale and in the R2 Zone, it's a very, very high flood hazard. And so that's why we brought forward the R2 Zone that restricted density to two dwelling units in the Brackendale neighborhood. The R3 is connected to the Cheekai Hazard. And so without the barrier being constructed yet and providing the protection, the recommendation from K W L was to limit it to the three dwelling. So that's the R3.
Thanks. Okay. So I think I understand that distinction. And now on to parking standards. My understanding of the logic between increasing the number of dwelling units near a frequent transit network is because our parking standards can be reduced because you're in principle near a, a frequent transit network. While staff's proposal is to not reduce the parking standards. And I see staff said in the report, parking standards are not proposed to be reduced at this time, given that the current bus service frequency does not meet the definition of a frequent bus route. So this, I, I see a logical inconsistency here that we're proposing a change in the zoning because this is a frequent transit, on frequent transit, but not parking because it's not yet on a frequent transit. So am I missing something? Or is there a logical inconsistency here?
I'll start. I think this is one of those chicken and egg transit conversations. So you could argue kind of logic from both sides potentially, depending on where you land on, on your parking values. So we're planning to take the step to increase the density, but leave the parking for now, knowing that we can then come back and revisit once the frequent transit network is established and look at redoing the parking regulations and doing reductions.
And then, so even in that, in that rendering, there were clearly not, it didn't seem as if there were six parking stalls in that rendering of the six units. Is it actually feasible on a 10,000 square foot lot to put six parking spots and six units? I picked 10,000 as a, as a standard, sort of a large-ish lot in Squamish.
So through the Chair, we haven't done any architectural kind of feasibility studies on any of the standard lot sizes in Squamish. So I can't kind of directly address that question. Our kind of assumption is that on larger lots, the feasibility of these will increase. But alternatively, somebody could decide to do some very small dwelling units that are kind of, you know, 500 square feet or whatever, and do six of those and do them stacked three in order to get enough parking onsite. So it's, it's a hard thing to address that question directly, but we haven't looked at the feasibility on a 10,000 square foot lot.
Last question, what's the benefit of maintaining the parking minimum standard? This is something I haven't, I'm, I'm struggling to understand why we maintain minimum standards for parking. Because it seems to me like if you're building a, if you're purchasing a property, you should have the ability to purchase a property without a car, if, without a parking spot, if you don't have a car, if you make that choice. But right now, we are requiring all dwellings to have a space for a car, thus requiring everybody to buy a space for a car, even if, if they need it or don't. So what's the, can you convince me why we should keep a parking minimum? It, it, it seems counterintuitive to me.
I'll start. Yeah. Okay. So through the Chair, I think this is along the lines of our previous values discussion. But keeping the parking requirements, the way that we introduce them through R1 provides that kind of consistency of like, this is what we said we'd do for R1 that was palpable to the community through all the work that we did through the R1. And so that's our initial direction in lieu of actually having a operating frequent transit network running right at present day.
So now we have, in principle, this is for that frequent transit network. So we should remove the parking. Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to council. I think that's a council's question, discussion, not a council, not a council staff discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have on my speakers list Counselor French, Counselor Stoner, and then Counselor Pedengal. So Counselor French?
Thank you, Chair. I note that each of the residential neighborhoods has varying degrees of yellow on, on the maps. There's one that has none, University Highlands. And just wondering if you could enlighten us, what is it about that neighborhood that has it not having any yellow lots?
Through the Chair, just to clarify, by yellow lots, you mean the proposed six-plex lots? So it is proposed to be in the Highlands. There should be some yellow lots running up along Highlands Way North showing in the mapping?
Yeah, that's Garibaldi Highlands. But this map is showing University Highlands outside of the red Garibaldi Highlands lines. And University Highlands is its own residential neighborhood.
Okay. So just to clarify through the Chair, you mean on the others, like at cap U, that neighborhood? Yes. So the current zoning of that neighborhood actually allows some of those existing lots. Townhouses are permitted use already in the zone. We haven't seen that necessarily play out because a lot of that housing is very new and also very expensive. And so there's maybe not that economic advantage to tearing down one of those multimillion dollar houses and building some, a townhouse, a small townhouse complex. They're all already permitted to do townhouse.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I have Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Um, through the Chair, can you just clarify what our actual requirement is under the commitment to the Housing Accelerator Fund for this work? The council report says, uses the language pursue as a right zoning, which isn't super prescriptive. And so I'm just curious what we're actually committed to doing here.
Thank you, through the Chair. Through our conversations with the Housing Accelerator Fund folks at CMHC, our commitment is to implement some six-plex zoning within the District of Squamish.
All right. That is helpful. I guess following on to Counselor Hamilton's question around feasibility. It feels challenging to me that we would then kind of just do this broad brush component if we haven't done any feasibility work. So why, is there an opportunity, I guess, I'll frame that question, is there an opportunity to do some of that feasibility work to see where the zoning would actually be useful to apply?
I'll start. Okay. So through the Chair, I think staff were of the opinion, again, building on our response to Counselor Hamilton, that if someone wanted to make this work with some very small dwelling unit sizes, then in theory, it's feasible. But it's, I guess there's a question between what's feasible theoretically and with no economic viability included. So we haven't, we're kind of just going on that, hey, anything is feasible. But we haven't done analysis to see what's economically viable in this housing market.
So I think this is where I get challenged and appreciate that we have a commitment with a grant here. And I don't want to be doing make-work projects that aren't actually going to be delivering on the housing that we know we need. And so there's two components here. One, there's like the theory around we should be putting six plexes near frequent transit networks. But we don't have a frequent transit network here yet. It's still at least a few years off. So the January 2026 start date is not going to get us to 15-minute bus service as defined by frequent transit network of the province. It's actually at least 2027. as defined by frequent transit network of the province. It's actually at least twenty twenty seven, and that's assuming that the province actually shows up with money. Um, so I, I'm just curious why we are pushing this now under the logic of frequent transit network being the driver for six plexes when frequent transit is not on the table.
I'll start.
You start.
Okay. Uh, through the chair, um, our understanding is that the frequent transit network commitments have been included in the three-year M O U with B C Transit and it's looking like it's possible in twenty twenty seven. So that's just a year and a half from now. And based on what we've observed anecdotally for the four plexes, it's been over a year since we adopted the fourplex zoning. We haven't seen any fourplexes built and occupied to this point. And so staff are also operating on the um, the actual amount of time that it might take to construct some of these six plexes will actually hopefully align very well with the frequent transit network coming online for our, our community.
If I may add, uh, through the chair, part of this is again, that chicken and egg, we're, we're hoping that we have the population to some degree to support frequent transit when it comes online as opposed to waiting. The same time, once we do get frequent transit, theoretically, the legislation should include us to require six units by right along frequent transit networks, having the ability to put the zoning in place now and refine it at the time as opposed to reacting to it like we did with Bill forty-four. It's an advantage from staff's perspective.
All right. Uh, I'll just clarify that our inability to get frequent transit network hasn't been a result of not having the densification at the locations. It's the province hasn't been bringing the money forward, although it's been in our budget for multiple years. Um, I think my other question on this at this point is just the mapping, um, that includes everything up to the Highlands, which is even further off than twenty twenty seven from fifteen minute bus service. And then as well as including the Garibaldi Estates neighborhood, which we literally just adopted a neighborhood plan for about a month ago. Um, and now we're proposing to then update the zoning yet again. Um, further to what we just did for five years of public engagement and what um, was a fairly controversial decision to come to that resulted in a lot of angst amongst community. And so why would we include that area now when we just concluded five years of engagement in the estates planning process?
Through the chair, um, speaking to councillor Stoner's first question, kind of about the Highlands extension. So my understanding, so our transit planner is not available today. But in talking with our transportation manager, my understanding is that the phase two January twenty twenty seven line should actually get us quite close to hitting the fifteen minute peak service in the Highlands. Um, and so that's why we're proposing to the extended.
Sorry, I can clarify, peak service is different than fifteen minute service from seven A M to seven P M. Peak service means that in the A M and the P M peak hours, we have fifteen minute service. We still don't have fifteen minute service all day long, which is the definition of the province.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. And then for the second question on the Garibaldi Estates neighborhood plans. So in discussion with the planner that worked through the plan, he was supportive of us moving the sixplex forwards in the Garibaldi Estates area, according to the mapping that we showed council today. The land use designation policies are totally in support of um, a range of small scale, multi-unit housing options. And this includes the multiple dwelling residential and, and the six units. And so because the land use policies are completely aligned with what we're proposing, our Garibaldi Estates lead planner was supportive of us making this change in the Estates neighborhood.
Probably leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Uh, is that, is that it for now councillor Stoner? Yeah? Okay, thanks. Uh, we'll move on to councillor Petten Gill, and then I have councillor, uh, Anderson and Mayor Hurford.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why the restriction to strata ownership as opposed to like rental or just freehold ownership or like, why is the strata piece important?
Through the chair, it's, it's not restricted to strata ownership. But in order to achieve the fee simple ownership, you'd have to meet all the subdivision requirements, which includes minimum lot size, which is probably unlikely on most of these properties.
So sorry, is that, are we adjusting the right thing? Like, is there something else, another adjustment that should go with this? Like, it's not clear to me. I guess, you know, why we wouldn't say six units are allowed if there are other changes in other places, we need to make other things make sense? Or is there a reason why strata specifically works well here or like?
I'll, yeah, I'll try. Okay. Okay. Um, so through the chair, it's not just strata ownership, but that's one avenue to um, for a potential owner developer to sell and make profit off of a sixplex development. If someone wants to hold on to them and not stratify them at all and keep them as rental units, that's entirely another possible option. It's not restricting that.
So sorry, am I missing? Cause the report I see says proposed R six strict, six strata units for a total of six units, which I'm taking as a reference to four units. Previously, it was four units plus an optional A D U, uh, but still restrictive. But so I'm just. It is, despite what I see in the report, the strata, we could strike that and it's not, that will not be, it will not mention strata in what comes to us in the final draft.
It's, it's not limiting somebody's ability to not subdivide and just to keep all of the units as, as rental units are under one title. So that's kind of implied in the, in the R one, and it would be implied in the R six as well.
Sorry. So I'm, I'm, I think what I missed was and got lost. If it wasn't strata, it would be six parcels then. Right? It's not.
No, it would be one parcel still with six dwelling units that have not been strata subdivided and are kept under one title.
Okay, I feel like I'm missing something because it seems to say it puts proposed six strata units, which doesn't seem to allow for other things.
Uh, through the chair, if I may, um, the strata units is to help compare it to R one as well within the report. The bylaw, the zoning law doesn't state that it needs to be stratified. It's just, is this, it has to be six dwelling units. It would need to be the definition of dwelling unit, which doesn't specify the tenure.
Okay, thank you. That, that's a helpful clarification. Um, and then I guess I will just say, taking advantage of the committee of the whole, I, I sort of am struggling with my colleagues of um, encouraging uh, very dense development before we have transit that requires very high levels of parking. It just seems that it's the wrong approach. If we can't make this work with low levels of parking, it's maybe not the right form is kind of my feeling.
I feel like that was a comment.
It sounds like.
I did have a, sorry, there was a question I was going to ask around that. Like, is there a way to sort of move forward this, but put a trigger sort of um, in the bylaw sort of available as soon as as frequent transit is established? So we can have the change now, have that caveat in there? Or do we need to make the change once that's in place?
Through the chair, I think staff's recommendation would just be to make a motion that includes that staff bring it forward once for looking at the parking regulations, once the frequent transit network is operational. And that's a council direction that we can track.
Oh, no, sorry, for clarity, I was thinking that the zoning change allowing for six units um, with much reduced parking, that whole package comes only once, as opposed to just changing the parking. My concern is mandating very high levels of parking attached to dense development right now.
I, I would suggest that as feedback for, for us to potentially consider, especially if it's a formal motion with other councillors in support.
Okay. Uh, I have councillor Ericson, councillor Anderson next.
Thank you. Uh, I wonder if staff could elaborate on the proposed scheduling of the public engagement activities for this initiative. I believe a, a slide was shown, but I'm not sure that I caught a, a scheduling for those activities.
Through the chair, we had a very broad schedule. It said we would do it sometime after a meeting with committee of the whole and prior to bringing the bylaw forwards. So we're considering um, doubling up on some of the other housing related engagement that we have planned around the housing needs assessment and the integration of policies around that into the O C P that we also want to do engagement on. So we're exploring kind of doing more of a broader housing engagement with the community.
Can we assume as far as seasons go, because summer is not a great time, Christmas perhaps neither? Uh, uh, whether we might be looking at fall, winter, spring for this. I am concerned that uh, this is something we would not want to take on during, during a, a less optimal time of year for engagement with the public.
Duly noted. And through the chair, our target is early September at this point. We just have not finalized anything. Yeah. We wanted to hear from committee first.
Uh, and through the chair, we are uh, running on a bit of a timeline with our Housing Accelerator Fund commitments. Uh, we had committed to implementing sixplex zoning to some degree by September. It does put our funding at risk if we are unable to complete this.
Thank you.
Sorry, my phone is reminding me to tell my children to read. Okay, I have uh, Mayor Hurford next.
Thank you. Um, the, the proposals, um, the lot coverage stays the same. Is that that correct? Is there an exception to that statement in here at all that I didn't jump out at me?
Yeah, the only thing we're proposing to change is the number of units possible.
Okay, um, and I think the um, I'm, I, I see the chicken and egg problem here. Um, I'm supportive of a lot of this. The, where I have a sticking point is I do think the Garibaldi Estates needs, sort of, I'm heading sort of out of town uh, from working from downtown up along the, the transit network. Um, to me, the Garibaldi Estates needs um, some special considerations, given the process we've just been through. I do think that, um, sorry, I had it up here. The um, in the um, in the Garibaldi Estates Subarea Plan, uh, there are properties that are, are, have R one as the baseline, but the allowable use is quite a bit higher. And I think that it would maybe appropriate to put the sixplex zoning by right on properties that fall into that general uh, classification. And then they can rezone to higher if they would like, but they have a higher available to them. To me, I think that's would be acceptable, but broadly across, I have a, a real challenge uh, with, with this, even though the um, in the Subarea Plan, in my preparation for this, it does speak, there's transit and hey, future is coming. But it's actually used as a justification for some of those higher density areas already. So perhaps moving the needle there would be, in those areas would be appropriate, given that we were just sort of moving the, the baseline rather than the maximum. That I think I could, I could um, uh, rationalize and rationalize to the, to the community as well. But across that whole area, I have a real challenge with, given the timing that we've, of, of this and, and the recent conclusion of that process, of the planning process. Um, so I'm hoping that that could be some middle ground to, to show um, moving some movements in this, in this area. And um, I also, um, so there's a couple, it's, I think it's mixed use residential B. And there is also a, what was the other one? Was it mixed use residential A? Mixed use residential A? Um, and maybe that rationale holds in a couple other spots, but at those, those two pieces in the, of the Garibaldi Estates already have a quite a high maximum, so we could move that R one to R six. And I don't think it would really. I think it sort of still fits with what we've discussed and engaged with in the, the community on. Does that make sense? And is that something that we can do and still meet the spirit of what we're trying to achieve here?
Through the chair. So in discussion with the Garibaldi Estates Lead Planner, we were going to leave alone the mixed use residential A, B, and C and address those through uh, implementation of the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, like the follow-through to pre-zone some of those areas to what we would like to see along those areas. What we're targeting is the ground-oriented residential and the medium lot residential that fall within that four hundred meter buffer of the future route. And, and those properties are, are also their land use designation policies speak to aligning with the provincial small scale, multi-unit housing legislation.
The, the mapping provided doesn't reflect that. Just doesn't reflect that special treatment for, which is the inverse of my logic, but it doesn't, that's beside the point. It just doesn't reflect that, that comment. So I think that will need to be updated if going, going forward. The um, and then the uh, so like everything south of the Mount Kilmer, I think makes sense to me. Where it starts to get complicated for me is north of the Mount Kilmer, Garibaldi Estates, as I just spoke to. And then um, the Highlands, I was happy to hear that the university uh, area doesn't need the adjustment because it already meets or exceeds this. And I think that's, that logic is, 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 holds for me. And I appreciate that. Um, but yeah, I, I think we could get there and have some movement on this. But the Highlands itself and the, where I don't think we meet the threshold for that, that future transit piece and, or sometime. I think the other one, it's coming and it's, it's close at hand and development doesn't occur overnight. Um, I, I, I'm okay getting a little ahead of it. I think that going into the Highlands may need some sort of phased approach where if some threshold of, um, and maybe it's the annual operating agreement or like the M O U's are still, three-year piece is still very aspirational. And we know that um, we've, we're hopefully coming out the other side of a, of a period of time where we had a very aspirational plan that was expressed in an M O U that the province didn't come and deliver on. So I do think that we um, that we need to be really careful that we're not building in a uh, a sort of a, a hard need for transit for the area to function and then the province leaving it to someone else to a, a, a big variable there. So I think some timing piece around consideration of this up into the Highlands towards the, towards the university would be um, would be appropriate. So and I'd like to debate the Garibaldi Estates specifically because that area does have a Subarea Plan in spirit of. And I think that area, maybe there's a way to break this into like, south of the Mount Kilmer, north of the Mount Kilmer conversation or maybe below the hill, up the hill, something like that. Because I do think that um, the engagement we've been through on the, on the Garibaldi Estates was extensive and I don't want to uh, step out and be really hesitant to step outside of that, um, given the process we've just been through. Although context continues to evolve, I will acknowledge that. However, uh, anyways, that's, that's a short version of where I am on this. Thank you.
Thanks. I just had one quick question on my own and then I'll go to councillor Petten Gill. Um, sorry if I missed this, but I was wondering if you could tell me how many properties are affected by this?
Through the chair, we don't have that information, but we can bring that or email that out.
Sure, yeah, that would be useful, just to get an idea of how much growth our increased density plans could accommodate. That'd be, that'd be great. Uh, councillor Petten Gill.
Yeah, and I, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear with my colleagues' concerns about the estates. Specifically, my recollection is that we did um, engage and speak in, in the process and written into the plan that when frequent transit network was in place, within four hundred meters, there'd be the sixth unit allowed. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Is the issue that we are accelerating it before it's technically in place and that's a concern? Or is it that, that's what's proposed here um, actually extends to some areas that we hadn't included in the original, in what we just approved? Like, is it simply a timing thing or is it also specifically which parcels within the estates that's the concern?
If, if I may, um, the um, I, I think, and that's where like that discussion, I'd really like to understand that and make sure that we are explicitly living up to what's there. There's, there's discussion, the discussion around the frequent transit area uh, says um, along Diamond Head Road, minimum parking. along Diamond Head Road, minimum parking requirement should align with R one regulations until the fifteen minute transit service is established, at which time parking requirements should be removed in alignment with provincial requirements. It's what it says in the, or so. But we're hearing things that are like, I, I think it deserves specific attention so that we can ensure the, the community that uh, the changes we're making do in fact align with what we've, with what we're, we've committed to, and maybe they do now in the current form, but I, I think it deserves a specific conversation to ensure that we're aligning with, we're talking about O C P alignment, we're talking about um, you know, housing action plan alignment and all these other pieces, but I think the alignment with this plan is a, is a specific subset that I would like to understand more before I wade into it.
Councilor Hamilton.
Thanks. I've asked about this neighborhood once before, and I thi- I think I understand what the answer is, but just want to ask again. Why is the Ravenswood neighborhood not considered uh, within this?
Yeah. Through the chair, they're farther than the four hundred meter walking distance. The updated, so there was one minor incorrect mapping that I showed that shows the frequent transit network going to Brennan Park. I think that when you guys reviewed the transit plan in June, you had didn't included that?
No, we included Brennan Park.
Okay. We, we can relook at it, but I actually do think it's past the four hundred meter walking distance.
I just checked, it's between two and five hundred, uh, depending on where you are in Ravenswood. Uh, as the crow flies, or as the raven flies, maybe, I'm, I'm not sure which type of bird it was flying.
So I can respond to that. So it's not by a bird, it's by walking on our sidewalks or trails. Or roads.
That one, okay, that one is harder to measure. Um, I suspect it may be because that's a C D thirty, I think the, the zone is C D thirty-eight, and so we might not just, we just might not be catching it. Like, in, in spirit, that is effectively an R one zone. But we don't catch it automatically because it's a C D zone. So I think we maybe should pay some attention to that, so that we don't keep having this, this neighborhood drop off our radar.
Through the chair, you're totally correct. It's a C D zone, and we didn't catch it because we buffered off of R one. Yeah, so, thank you.
Councilor Pen Gill.
So just building off that, does that mean things like the seven, whatever, right across from Brennan Park and the Anthem and so on would likely possibly be captured in this, even though they are C D zones, we would?
Through the chair, no, because they're multifamily already, yeah.
Okay, do we have any other uh, questions from council, or are you ready to move a motion here? Mayor Herford.
Um, so it's always my preference that we capture the feedback in one, in one motion. Would, would it be appropriate to ask staff what feedback they've, like, would take away from this, or should we attempt as a group to coalesce that into, into a motion? Because I, I, I hear that your um, recommended motion here assumes some feedback is to be provided, so how would you like, how would you like to address that?
I mean, the easier thing would be for you to tell us what you want, rather than for us to mimic back what, what our votes are.
Okay, so um, that is a totally fair reply, and I appreciate that. That is also my preference. I'm gonna take that on board and think about it, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. We'll figure out how we get together on a, a motion here. We have the starting of a motion, but I do think that having some bullet points would be the best path forward. So I look forward to, to comments on how to address this.
Councilor Pen Gill.
So sorry, for clarity, are staff able to, and there may be not a response today, but um, is it, do we actually have to change our bylaws to make the, whatever it is, the grant funding requirement, make the bylaw changes? Or is it, like, would it be sufficient to have a, a bylaw that says if, you know, the caveat in the bylaw, if a frequent transit is available, you may have six units, and these are the reduced parking requirements? And is that sufficient to uh, to meet the, the grant funding requirements, something like that?
Uh, thank you through the chair. Uh, the, to meet the grant funding, we would need to implement sixplex zoning to some degree. It doesn't necessarily need to be the degree that was presented here today, but implementing it with a caveat would not meet the requirements, as per our understanding from the Housing Accelerator Fund staff.
Councilor Stoner.
Yeah, further than that, I am curious. Um, so our current R four zoning, um, and the R one zoning basically allows for five units as defined. Um, so I appreciate they're not six units, but we did go all the way to five units for the vast majority of our community. And so I do wonder if going back to the Housing Accelerator Fund, it's not sixplexes, but it's pretty close. Um, and I just, I'm curious on this, because I feel like this, again, is a bit of a make-work project to check a box in a grant that isn't actually going to deliver on the housing form that we want with regards to frequent transit network and a reduced parking variance, because people don't need to have cars, and so you can actually deliver affordable or more affordable housing closer to transits, because you're not paying for parking. So we're just like stuck in this weird loop, and I'm trying to figure out how we still meet our grant requirements. So we can actually deliver housing that people need. So like putting five hundred thousand towards moving some infrastructure that's going to potentially deliver a hundred and sixty units. To me feels like a shared end goal with legitimate outcomes that we're trying to achieve. This feels like we've already seen a year and a half of delay in trying to uptake on the fourplexes, or the, we haven't even seen a fiveplex come forward with it, even though we've had the zoning in place for almost a year. And so where is our wiggle room here to go back to the Housing Accelerator Fund and say, we have fiveplexes available across our community? And we don't yet have the province in hand for frequent transit network. Um, so we have this zoning at the ready, we just haven't actually, like, we've drafted it, but we haven't moved it forward at this point, because we don't have the precursor requirements to make it successful.
Uh, through the chair, so the opportunity for change periods on our Housing Accelerator Fund commitments have closed. Uh, there were several changes to dates as related to the affordable housing uh, projects. Um, there, what has been communicated to us at this point is that there are no further opportunities to change if we were to miss a commitment. Um, we, our funding would be at risk, and furthermore, it has been expressed to us that if we don't make our permit numbers, which um, is unlikely at this point, it will be reviewed, we will be reviewed closely at this point. Um, happy to have further conversations with C M H C, however, that is, that is what staff have understood up to now.
Can you just respond a little bit on the potential of considering fiveplexes? As, like, again, it's not written as per this, it's like not directly the sixplex as committed in our house, in our agreement, but is there any validity to going back to them and saying, we've allowed for fiveplexes basically across our entire community?
Uh, at this point through the chair, uh, they are aware that we do allow up to five units across the community. So I'm not sure entirely uh, that this would meet that requirement at this point.
Mayor Herford.
Sorry, I have a, I'm prepared to, to make a motion, but if there's further questions, um.
Councilor Pen Gill.
Sorry, can you remind me how broadly we have to implement this now to meet our requirements? Like, could we say given the absence of the frequent transit and are, we're trying to do, and, and we don't want to exacerbate parking and traffic challenges, so we can do this downtown where there's walkable employment services and existing density. So uh, we'll do it now with reduced parking at six, it makes our requirement, or does this have to be community-wide? Or, or how?
Yeah, thank you for that question through the chair. It does not need to be community-wide. Um, certainly, if council directs us to do a reduced scope, uh, we would double check with our requirement, but I believe it would meet it.
Councilor Anderson, did I see your hand?
Well, I guess I'll just briefly uh, um, register my concerns that, that I share with, with Councilor Stoner. And in, uh, with respect to the Garibaldi Estates and Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, with the perspectives shared by Mayor Herford. I'm very uncomfortable with this, and I think we're in a trap. And uh, in fact, I'm quite angry about it, and I, I think we, we're not a cookie cutter community. We're a long-distance commuter community. And that is the reality behind how we're going to realize the, what the benefits should be of a frequent transit network. We, the big picture, we're not a cookie cutter community, and this program seems to assume we are. I'm getting off here, but uh, we have just been through this Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan process, and I agree with the concerns raised by my colleagues. I think that this is uncomfortable and will be uncomfortable for the community. That's why I'm concerned about the timing of the public engagement. Uh, it's intrusive. They will look at this four hundred meters, which is not a small distance. The maximum for B C transit maximum is by policy six hundred meters. Um, so I'm concerned that we cannot do, ha, ha, uh, pursue an alternative of a draft bylaw that we would have ready. I just don't think the timing is right, and I'm not convinced of the chicken and egg argument at this time in the bigger picture. I think the impacts will be low, and even in the medium term uh, of pursuing this, in, in terms of what we're going to realize for the housing end and uh, the, and for other reasons, the frequent transit network. So I'm very uncomfortable, and I, and I'm most uncomfortable with the fact that the public are going to uh, register discomfort with this. And especially those that have been through the Garibaldi Estates process. And those people, and there are quite a number of them, that are still licking their wounds from the recent court case concerning Park Crescent. That's not a small number of households that are very concerned about the trends, and I think we need to give this time. And to be successful, I don't think we want to risk success with an untimely initiative that appears to me to be quite intrusive, and I believe that much of the public will feel the same way. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Councilor Hamilton, did I see your hand?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I was dug into our, um, what I believe is our Housing Accelerator Fund commitments. And the missing middle housing accelerator, uh, I think this is commitment number three is pursue as of right zoning to allow for sixplexes along frequent transit network. Is that the commitment that you're concerned that we won't meet?
I bet it's correct, yes.
In the absence of a frequent transit network, I'm confused by how we can meet the objective.
Uh, thank you through the chair. The language in the uh, commitment is core transit network. In the, I have the application form open as well, so that might have been the portion that is was within the council report, but within the application, it does say core. So we can certainly, again, take that back to C M H C, but at this time, this is our understanding, uh, and we can, we can talk to our funders, but I think beyond that, staff are really going to struggle giving you more of an answer on the details of the language.
Okay, do we have any more questions or comment? Mayor Her, Herford?
I'm gonna test the motion here, that the committee direct staff um, to um, to prepare a uh, zoning bylaw uh, amendment that would um, allow for the six units um, near the frequent bus routes uh, for the um, with, for the south, for south of the Mount Kilmer. Then to bring back a uh, analysis of uh, the Garibaldi Estates uh, um, neighborhood plan, and how it relates to this initiative uh, to a future community of the whole, um, as well as um, timing for the Garibaldi Highlands uh, to be um, linked to confirmed frequent transit service. And then to engage with the public on a total package of the outcome of that work. That's my, my motion. If there's a seconder.
Do you have a seconder? I don't see a seconder. Oh, seconded by uh, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I think, I think that um, there's a couple things here. First, the, the areas um, where we are currently are one, we do have a five, five units. It's four and an A D U. I think that this is an additional form that may work on some of those sites, may not with the parking and the site constraints, so I don't see that being a huge, a huge change, and I think it's, uh, we've already heard that what we've had, we haven't seen return on. This is providing another option in those areas. How impactful that will be or not, I, I don't know. Uh, but it would provide another option. I do, I've, earlier in the conversation, I spoke about the, my concerns around the Garibaldi Estates. I want to make sure that we that we, uh, any changes outside of what we've already done are uh, are really intentional. And whether this ties into, I don't want to complicate this, why tying it into necessarily a, a implementation plan of Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, which might be a bigger piece of work. I don't know, but I'd like to understand this better. I do think it deserves specific attention, and if we were to go out to the community to engage with what's proposed here, we are going to need to answer questions about the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, as it is something that's um, we engaged on for a long period of time, and there's a lot of public interest in. So I think really understanding that, and I, I I know that throughout this conversation, we've heard that there's been conversations with staff internally, but I'd like to have that knowledge myself, so I can champion this, this work going, going forward, and I can be um, informed as I make a, a decision. Um, I do think some, as part of this work, highlighting the need for additional um, transit service uh, commitments from, from the province is really, really important, and I think the Highlands piece um, there is a way to um, to sort of hang that, uh, to highlight that uh, commitment from the province and, and our willingness to move when we receive that, that commitment as we do this work. And then I think it's important that we engage on the total package of things, not just what the next step is. But hey, these are, this is the, the initiative overall. These are the transit plans, this is what it would look like, and go out altogether. So I think we do need an additional step before we engage. I don't think we're ready to engage in this whole package by September, because I, I think we need some more work here, but I think um, this moves it, moves it forward and provides a um, a alter, alternative, a potential alternative to that uh, fourplex and an A D U uh, form um, that we may see some, some uptake on, and it does not change. I would not feel this way if there was a change in uh, in lot coverage or, or any of those other pieces. This is just the same built uh, space carved up a little, a little differently, and I, and I can support, um, so I can support that on that, on this scale for those reasons. Thank you.
Thanks. I see Councilor Stoner has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. This is the chair. Uh, well, I appreciate where the mayor is trying to go with this, and I won't be supporting the motion on the floor. I think it is a lot of work to break it up as presented. Um, again, for not much return um, on actually to potential delivery of housing units. Um, so I want to check my previous comments of this being a make-work project by staff, that was not a reflection on staff's work. It was more so a frustration that other orders of government make us jump through these stupid hoops in order to get the money that we need to deliver the housing that our community actually needs at the end of the day. Um, and so that is where I find the frustration, and so my preference would be that we vote down this motion by the mayor and pursue sixplex zoning in the downtown core, potentially with some amended parking, so that it would actually potentially be viable at the end of the day. Um, and we start there, uh, as opposed to doing multi-phased um, guesses of what this might look like in neighborhood by neighborhood, and then some potential long-winded public engagement on it. Um, for something that we still actually don't think may be even economically viable at the end of the day. Um, so I think if sixplexes are going to work anywhere, they are going to work downtown, um, because there's, we know that that's the most walkable component of our community. Um, and so I'd be willing to entertain that as like a fairly swift way to both achieve our goals in, as we've stated them, in the Housing Accelerator Fund uh, and not put too much more time and effort into this, until such time that we actually have a frequent transit network that would allow us to reduce our parking standard and maybe make these projects more viable. But otherwise, I think we're just setting everybody up for failure and a lot of angst in our community for something that is maybe not worthwhile at the end of the day. But otherwise, I think we're just setting everybody up for failure and a lot of angst in our community for something that is maybe not worthwhile at the end of the day.
Okay, thanks. I have Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. I believe I'm more in line with Counselor Stoner's perspective on this. Although I, I might argue that, so I don't see how a sixplex with the parking requirements is feasible on most of what we're rezoning here. So I actually, it doesn't seem, it's not clear to me that if, if we were to do this, which would thankfully meet our half requirement, that anything would actually get built. Because it, it seems like maybe you could put a sixplex with six parking spots and a few 500 square foot, six 500 square foot units in it. And I don't see that being a viable, a viable product. So I actually wonder anyways, but I, I don't want to play that game of putting together a zoning that I don't think is actually viable. To me, the critical issue here is the, I, I don't see the sixplex zoning being viable with the parking minimums. So I'm not supportive of a sixplex zoning that requires six parking stalls. The only place that I see it being viable without the parking requirements right now is downtown because of the walkability of downtown. So yeah, I think, sorry, I'm meandering on there. But I will not be supporting Mayor Hereford's proposal. Because I, I see that as more work than, than will be benefit to our community in built, in the built environment.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Petten Gill.
Yeah, thanks. I'm, I think more aligned with Counselor Stoner as well, so I, I don't think I'll be supporting this. There's a couple of things for me. One, again, pending the risk analysis from the Fordis Wood Fiber Pipeline. I'm not comfortable with density in the Dentville area and part of the, the North Yards there until I have a bit more clarity. And, and so that's an obstacle for me on this. I also want to address my, my colleague's comment. All the reports we've seen recently about our commuter numbers that are definitely commuters, but we are not a predominantly commuter community. That's not what the numbers say. And when I see, you know, look at the statistics for Maple Ridge and other communities, we have lower commuter rates. And as far as I can tell, we are, we, we don't prohibit commuting, but we are not designing around commuting. And so I, I think it's just simply inaccurate and not helpful to discussions about where we are as a community to claim we are community, commuter community. Because that isn't real. There is some commuting, and we can talk about that and discuss it, but let's not misinform about where we are there. I, I would say I, it, it does frustrate me that we would put a bunch of effort into what seems to be a, an unachievable form that will have a lot of community upset when we're talking about this sort of level of density. And if it's something that we can't actually achieve, and if we did achieve it, isn't actually the thing we want to achieve. Because we don't want a bunch of high-density vehicle development. Because people are complaining about traffic and parking downtown. So we don't want to drive a huge number of new cars, I think. So until we have a way with frequent trans or whatever it is, I think we should focus on something else, you know, so maybe focus downtown. Maybe we should make the minimum requirement 40 cars per unit and really make sure it just, you know, we, we tick our box of six units, but make sure it just doesn't get developed. I mean, maybe that's the best option here. But yeah, I, I just don't really want to put staff and the community through this until we can make it work with a lower parking standard and, and make it actually developable. Thank you.
All right, I have Mayor Hereford.
Couple of points. I've heard some comments around why we wouldn't support the motion on the table based on the high parking requirements. There is the opportunity available to amend the motion to have us discuss the parking requirements included. Second point, I'm challenged with the concept of exclusively downtown. Our frequent transit network, if it was to service downtown, it's a benefit downtown. And the Garibaldi Estates would have run up the highway. We could achieve that. It moves the route that it does, that we debated, was it just last week, recently anyways, about the route? Because it serves the whole community and we need the, the, the users along the line benefit from, from that as well. So I, the downtown only piece, I, I'm, I'm challenged with. I get that this is a challenging topic. But otherwise, we just run up and down, up and down the highway. And maybe that would be defendable when it was the terminus of our, of our route only that would have that higher density. Thirdly, the commitment that was made was in, under the Housing Accelerator Fund was also a commitment of this, of this body. So it wasn't independent of, of us. So we need to grapple with this, with this concept. And I think that what I'm heard is, what I've heard as an alternate isn't appealing on it and on a number of levels that way. Thank you.
Oh, well, thanks. I have comments from Counselor French first.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I will be supporting the mayor's motion. I'm just going to leave it there.
Counselor Petten Gill, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I, I think just to address a couple of the comments. One of the reasons why I might contemplate some form of six unit with reduced parking downtown is because a lot more services and employment is concentrated right there. So in the short term, when there isn't a frequent transit network, it seems like more viable there. I am sort of hesitant because of some of the other things to consider this in other areas. Especially when, you know, it's without that frequent transit network in place. And I, I would also say that, yes, council did support the, the, the application. But we've just heard what was submitted was around core transit. It sounds like what we had in our reports was around frequent transit. So there's a bit of a disconnect there. And I think, you know, the, the language I wrote down is pursue, not necessarily implement, but pursue. And frequent transit network was a key element of that in my mind. And so I, I think we have been doing and really trying to. And the, the gap is, the missing piece is the frequent transit network. And we've come with our budget and our assets. So we pursued the heck out of this as far as I'm concerned. And it's other orders of government, like the province that is the missing piece here. So for me, I would say we are actually pursuing it. We've done that. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll call the question, all in favor? Okay, we have Counselor French, Anderson, and Mayor Hereford supporting, and all opposed. We have Counselor Stoner, Petten Gill, Green Law, and Hamilton opposed. Is there another motion? What you got there, Counselor Hamilton?
So first, a, a question to staff. When I read out the Housing Accelerator Fund language that we had, that council considered, which was pursue as of right zoning to allow six plexes along a frequent, frequent transit network. Staff replied that what was in the application was core transit network. Is there a definition of what core transit network is?
So we don't have our transit planner in the room. But my understanding in talking with the manager is that there was a shift. There was previously, the terminology was more core, and then it trended towards switching to frequent, which is what the province uses. And so we kind of picked up more on that. So I think it's just semantics.
I would argue in this situation, it's not semantics. Because to me, the, the urgency of, so, so the reason why semantics, the re, sorry, I'll allow.
Ms. Glende.
If I could respectfully, through the chair, ask council members to debate among one another. Thank you very much. Staff are here to answer the questions.
Thank you. And I absolutely see how core and frequent may not have been important at, at that time. Now that we're in this scenario, when the province has a definition of frequent transit, and it's that definition of frequent transit that we are being held to for, for things like transit-oriented development, that 15-minute service is the measurement that I think it's important that we hold ourselves to and we hold the province to. I think we are doing a disservice to our community if we put in this zoning with the parking requirements in the absence of the provincial commitment to the frequent transit network. So I'm going to put forward a motion that we, that the committee direct staff to. Nope, I'm going to spend a moment to think about a motion. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Stoner.
I'll give my colleague a minute as he's trying to pull together a motion. Otherwise, I think I have something.
He, he says, go ahead.
So I'll test the following, that staff be directed to bring back a bylaw that would apply sixplex zoning in the downtown core with a reduced parking standard. Nope. All right, somebody else can try.
Oh, are you seconding? Okay, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill.
So I think I've spoken to this a fair bit. I, in my heart of hearts, agree with the idea of putting six plexes along a frequent transit network. And we don't have a frequent transit network in Squamish. And so that's where my biggest challenge is. I think as others have said, we do our community a disservice if we try and force six plexes with the parking standard as presented. It doesn't achieve any of our climate walkable communities or our affordable housing components in terms of trying to drive costs down. I think it actually just elevates the cost of land, maybe over time, as we allow more density without it actually being viable. And so I think downtown core, as I've mentioned in the past, is maybe the one area where I think that this could actually potentially work because it is the most walkable part of our community. And so a reduced parking standard, I think, is viable. We've done it for other projects. And I still don't know if it would be feasible or viable based on the lot sizes that are available. But I think it would also allow us to achieve the general objective as presented in our Housing Accelerator Fund granting, hopefully. And would allow us to keep receiving the funding that we need to actually deliver real housing for our community over time.
Counselor Petten Gill.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to clarify with the mover, just given some of the, the discussion and about a public engagement possibly in September. If, if the intent of this is that we absolutely come back with something that is a blanket for the whole downtown or sort of in the engagement and so on, if it, it comes to pass that we focus this for now on a few specific properties in the, the downtown core where it makes sense, that also could sort of meet the expectation of this resolution. And so we would sort of proceed down the road and see what the engagement said and so on.
More comments? Mayor Hereford?
Yeah, thank you. I think as I attempted to capture with my previous failed motion, I think that if this is a, this is a transit discussion as, as well as a walkability discussion. And I think that sort of putting the burden on the terminus, the ends of our, of our frequent transit network when it exists is, isn't appropriate. And I think it needs to be along, along the whole line to support it, to actually support its operations. And, and as far as a reduced parking standard, I understand the impetus behind that. When I think about a, a portion of the community that where we hear about parking challenges, it's in, you know, it's in the, it's in the downtown core. And I know that we'll have, I don't know that we've gone below one per, one per unit, except for maybe some shared commercial use or something. So I'm really challenged by this, this concept. And somehow it's both too much and not enough at the same time. So I, I won't be supporting the motion in its current form.
More comments? Counselor Petten Gill.
Sorry, yeah, I intended that my last comment to be a question to my colleague of clarification of what was the intent. But I will just sort of say my, my, change it to a comment and, and clarify that. I do think, given where we are, this seems like the best path. But my hope would be that during the engagement, we seek to understand if this is actually appropriate to blanket the whole downtown with this change. Or if for now, and to meet the requirements of the grant and the engagement, it makes more sense to target a few specific properties. But I will let the engagement and the, the, you know, the future process sort of come to that determination. And so in that context, from my perspective, I'm comfortable moving forward with this.
Just in response to my colleague, my intent behind the motion was just to cover the units that were highlighted in yellow as, in the downtown as presented by the staff report.
Any comments? Okay, with. Yes, Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. I feel like I need to say something. Both too much and not enough. I mean, that, Mayor Hereford, your, your comment about this reduced parking in downtown, it being both too much and not enough resonates with me. I think, I feel like we're in a difficult position here. Where I think we agree that with a frequent transit network, we want to move forward with this R six. And we've got language in the half in the Housing Accelerator Fund grant that is ambiguous between frequent transit network and this thing called a core transit network. I would actually, I'm going to, so I'm going to vote against this motion because I don't believe that we're at a point of clarity here that we, that we have a sufficient amount of information and clarity to make a call on such a big change to our downtown or to everything along what is not yet a frequent transit network. So I'll be voting against this motion.
Okay, I'm going to call the question, all in favor of the motion? That's Counselor Stoner and Counselor Petten Gill and those opposed. I don't know. So Counselor Hamilton, French, Anderson, Green Law, and Mayor Hereford oppose. Well, at this point, we're almost two hours over our meeting time. Really cheering effectively here. Should we? Okay, let's go.
That the committee directs staff to bring back a District of Squamish zoning bylaw for six units near a, a frequent bus route, considering the following feedback from council? And when I leave out then my intent there, following feedback is for each counselor, we can set an amendment and then vote on the amendment so that staff have a clear view of what council's direction is on each item. Is that?
Do we have a seconder? Oh, sorry, Ms. Glende, or sorry, Ms. Ms. Von Bloto.
Can I suggest that you do a draw poll of the feedback that you'd like to include and then move forward with crafting a motion on, based off of that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion. My, my advice is going to be very similar to that. Whereas if the mover, someone wanted to move a motion like this that included their feedback, then others could layer on with amendments. That might be a good starting, a good starting point for us as well, which is effectively the same, the same thing. I think we have, we have, A, what the regulation is and the scope, the geographic impact of that and maybe the triggers. So I'm just kind of three big categories, maybe. But we need to do something with this at this point, and I know we've been, been trying.
But we need to do something with this at this point. And I know we've been, been trying.
Counselor Pettengill.
Sorry, question of clarity for staff. And I've lost track in the discussion, but the word pursue in the half, do we have confirmation that that means, that that means implement? Or sort of, you know, doing everything we can to implement a frequent transit network? Does that sufficient to meet the bar of pursue? Do we have an understanding from the funder of, of where we are on that commitment, if that qualifies?
Through the chair, we have an understanding that pursue means implement to some degree.
Okay, more comments? Any? Just give staff a minute here and then.
Can I try a totally different direction with a motion?
I love it, Counselor Stoner. You go for it.
Let staff be directed to go back and discuss with CMHC on allowing five-plexes and commitments to establishing a frequent transit network as sufficient to achieving this goal as set out in the Housing Accelerator Fund.
Jenna, could you please repeat your motion?
I could try. So it would be that staff be directed to go back to the funder, who is CM, so, sorry, that staff be directed to go back to CMHC with five-plexes across all R1 zoning and commitments to implementing frequent transit network funding if and when matched by the province as sufficient efforts to pursue outcome three as outlined in the Housing Accelerator Fund grant.
I think we have a seconder with Counselor Pettengill. Would you like to make some comments?
I think we can keep spinning our wheels here and trying to find some sort of direction to staff to implement this. My preference would be to get some clarity on from the funder on what is viable here, given that we don't have a frequent transit network. That was a core part of, whether you call it a core transit network or frequent transit network, it's 15-minute service from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM as defined by the province. Even when we implement to 2027, we don't get to that level of transit service, even in the core part of our frequent transit network. We get there during peak hours. And so this, while I appreciate we put this into the grant application, I would argue that we continue to do amazing work on the housing file. And this just feels like it's not going to deliver. And so I think going back to the funder is not a bad option here to say there's lots of other pieces that we are moving. And we're willing to look at parking minimums, we're willing to do all these other things. And this just feels like it's not functional at this time because the province hasn't met us to try and actually implement frequent transit in our community. And if that really is not going to fly with them, then fine, let's bring it back and talk about how we can actually implement this. But this feels like we're pushing something onto this council, onto our community, that is just not functional, not viable. And again, does not, this is not a reflection of staff's work here, but it feels like we are jumping through hoops for other orders of government just to get the funding that we know we need to deliver actual housing. And so I'm tired of using our time trying to figure out a way that's going to be functional to do this. I'd rather actually just get to doing good work. And again, your work, it's not that your work is not good, staff. It's that federal government really frustrating at the moment.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. I think we're all starting to feel that frustration in other levels of government in this respect. I will turn to the seconder, Counselor Pettengill, for comments.
Thank you. I will support this. I was, I'm not feeling like I'm operating at my best. I've found this to be, I've found this to be a particularly challenging day. And so I'm feeling subpar. We seem to be generally all spinning our wheels. So I was gonna just propose a motion to defer. To my mind, this is actually a better option because it allows staff to get that last piece of clarity. We can come back fresh. It gives staff a bit of a chance to consider everything we've said, bring back possibly some creative ideas, but make sure it actually comes back quickly. So we're not, you know, this will come back soon when we're fresh and we can hopefully tackle it more constructively, even if we find ourselves at the same starting point, I think. I'd like to believe we can do a better job with fresher brains.
Mayor Hereford?
A better job with fresher brains. I like that. I'm also an eternal optimist. I, so I appreciate the effort so far around the table to get us somewhere. And this is a new, is a way. I think my concern with this is, I'm trying to figure out how we provide direction, but then when we get back, what we actually need to make a decision. So if they come back, it takes an additional cow to discuss the outcome of that. But I know I have concerns sitting here today around the, you know, what phasing could look like to make a future commitment when we meet a certain threshold. And maybe that's something that can be explored or how it relates specifically to the Garibaldi Estates, like that deeper, and some more analysis there. So I think this motion to me is the most supportable so far, but it still has some holes in like what that next step is because we could find ourselves in the same position on those other topics that I feel like there's some appetite to have those questions answered around the table. So it's, it's close, but I'm gonna listen to the comments to see if there's I don't really want to necessarily propose amendments to, to this because then that kind of defeats the purpose because it creates a bunch of work to actually answer those questions as well before it comes back. So, but I'm cautious that we're, we're committing ourselves to, by this to not just one more cow, but maybe more, as there are additional aspects of this to, that are seen to be of concerns around the table.
Can I make an amendment to my motion?
Sorry, what's that, Counselor Stoner?
Propose an amendment to my motion.
Ah, okay.
And that is, would be to let staff and the mayor be directed to go back to CMHC.
Seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Should we have any comments on the motion or on the amendment? Or do we just want to vote? Okay, those in favor of the amendment? That's unanimous? Okay. And then I had Counselor French has a comment.
Yeah, thanks Chair. With all the discussion we've had and the various things that have been put on the table today, I think that this motion is the best we're going to get at this point and the most appropriate direction at this point.
I'm going to speak in support of any motion that ends this conversation. So I'm here for it. Counselor Hamilton, you got something?
In response to both too much and not enough, this is not quite enough, but just fine for now. Because I don't think we're going to get to a resolution tonight that's going to lead us and our community in a positive direction. I think we need more information. I thank staff for bringing this to us. This is important work. I just don't think we're ready at this point in time to make this decision.
Perfection is the death of progress. Okay, shall we have a vote on the motion? Yeah, we going for this? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, staff. I'm so sorry. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion. What could that motion be? I suppose it's a motion to terminate. All right, well, Counselor Stoner, I wasn't gonna give it to you today because you didn't even get a Seamus in there. I feel like that's unfair. But fine, I'll give it to you. And then I'll second do it to Hamilton. All in favor? Everyone unanimous? Okay, thanks.
So welcome back to the special meeting of the business, special business meeting. Do we?